Good evening, everyone. Welcome, it is Tuesday, September the 24th, right at 6:00 PM. So officially called this board meeting to order. We'll do a local today. I'm sorry, it's a little table.
Dave Larson, Director of District 5. Derek Crawford.
Pauline Weber. That is not the things that super. Carly Huber, Department of Public Affairs, Director of District 1.
Charles Simpson, District 3.
Robert, District 2.
Alex Rooster.
Welcome to all of our guests, joining both in person and online. Really glad that you are here. Nice to see so many people present this evening. All right, we'll start with our land recognition. It was a few, I can't remember if you're cooler. Are you okay to read it?
Oh.
Sorry, twice in a row.
They're handing me the script.
Exactly, you have to jump in. It'll be up there, it'll be quite small.
Yeah. That'll be too far. I think, you know, too far behind, which I've been in.
Okay, you got it. All right, we at the Tepulah School District acknowledge that the land where we teach, collaborate, learn, and play is their traditional land, first people of Seattle. The Duwamish and Murrumbitch people pass and present and honor the gratitude of the land itself and the Duwamish and Murrumbitch tribes. As a public school district, we have a responsibility for the stewardship of this land, and we strive to work alongside the Duwamish and Murrumbitch people who have been living and working here since time immemorial. We further acknowledge that the burden of environmental exploitation and systemic injustice fall upon the labor of Black and Brown bodies in the building of this country and its institutions. We remember that Black and Brown people were born and died working this land against their will for generations. We also acknowledge the continued contribution of the labor survivors over the centuries to today of all immigrant labor, including voluntary, involuntary, trafficked, forced, and undocumented people in the building of our version of the United States. As a school district leadership, we pledge to recognize and work against systems that have historically and currently enforced included in that release among the people that serve. Now, for those who would like, I'd like you to stand as we salute them. At my allegiance.
Of the United States of America. And to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, well, move to approve tonight's agenda. All in favor? All right. All right, now, who are you ready for public comments? There are multiple ways to submit a public comment. One is here in person. You can also submit a written public comment to, excuse me, through the online form. And then if you're joining us virtually, you'd like to offer a public comment, you can do so by raising your hand or typing your name into the chat. We do have to folks sign up for in-person public comments. So if you are online, you can go ahead and take your time to find that raise hand button or type your name in the chat. So we'll start with our first in-person public comment, Natalie Reader. Please start.
Hi, everyone. My name is Natalie Reader. I am a former educator with the Tepulah Education Association for two years. From 2020 to 2024, I was a fifth grade teacher, third grade teacher, and an MLL specialist at Cascade View. While at Cascade View, I held many roles outside of being a teacher. I co-founded CD Dance Crew for primary age students, where they performed a dance routine in front of their community at Foster High School. I was a coach for girls on a run for three years while I helped students build confidence, learn social skills, and ultimately run a 5K. I was also a building representative for the Tepulah Education Association for two years. In May of last school year, I was among five other teachers at CD to have their contract renewed. This was a possibility I had planned for, as the Tepulah district budget was significantly impacted. After receiving notice of my nonrenewal, I immediately made an appointment to appeal with Dr. Pedroza. We met for over an hour, and I presented her with 20 letters of support from parents, students, and colleagues. I was not able to have my contract renewed after that meeting, but I held out hope that I would be recalled later in the summer. As time passed, I was not called, and I have since found employment in another district. I say all of this because I would like the board to know that even after a nonrenewal of my contract, I did everything in my power to stay with TFP. I'm here today as still very active member of this community and to let the board know that my heart is broken for Cascade View. Cascade View is a magical place for all that get to experience it. It is brimming with language, knowledge, excitement, and community. It breaks my heart to know that three classroom teaching positions still need to be filled. It angers me even more to know that this could have been avoided. The positions they are trying to fill this year could have been filled by quality educators who wanted them and would return to their community in a heartbeat. They will find people to fill these positions, but the harm to the community won't be erased because the positions are filled. The students would still think about daily our main top substitutes, while five teachers they had built lasting connections with over many years were pushed out of their school. The damage is done, the hurt to the community will last, and the trust is broken. Something needs to change. It might be too late for me, but it is not too late for my students. Thank you.
Next is Madison Hammond.
Hello. My name is Madison Hammond, and I taught at Cascade View from 2020 through 2024, beginning my career as an educator there. I began as a third grade teacher online, then went into hybrid. The following year, after reapplying, re-interviewing, and then rehired, I taught fourth grade for the remainder of my time at Cascade View. Like now, I was passionate about extracurricular activities, co-leading the Lego Robotics Club from 2021 to 2023. I also coached soccer and basketball, intramural sports during the 2024 school year. Finally, I established an LGBTQ+ lunch group for students and for students in and allies of the community. This went on from 2022 to 2024. Here, students were able to find and build community while learning about career history and identity in the stage space. At the end of last year, I also received my nonrenewal letter with five of my colleagues. I went through the appeal process, gathering letters, and putting together a probably too long presentation of what I bring to our school and meetings. Well, colleagues at other schools were able to be recalled in June. No calls came from CD up until a week before the school year started. Just four days earlier, I'd accepted a different position. I had waited all I could to be recalled and knew of open positions. It broke my heart to decline returning to Cascade View, and our school is still in M+. Hearing about the multiple substitutes filling those positions turns my stomach, especially as I had filed multiple complaints and brought up concerns about substitutes and their industry. I know that I don't know all of the pieces of the puzzle that made up this situation, but it follows a pattern I've seen over the course of four years, where Cascade View is not receiving what students need. Years ago, there was talk of new SEL curriculum, but there was no training or resources given for them. Field trips have taken far longer to get approved than colleagues at other schools in the district. CD has had the highest referrals and suspensions than any other elementary school, and there has not been low behavioral support. And now our students have lost five trusted adults who have shown up for them in more ways than just in the classroom. A harm to our community is irreparable, despite new teachers that will be hired to fill those positions. Students who already have more than enough going on outside of school are now having to experience these sweeping changes without trusted teachers. Cascade View is the best school on earth, and I truly believe that. You will not find the diversity, perseverance, understanding, creativity, and drive that all kids have. While I can't advocate for them as a teacher anymore, I will now stand as a community member as I ask the district to do better for our students. Thank you.
Is there anyone online that can comment? I don't see any kind of rates. So just again, it kind of knocks it that we don't respond to our related hot comment. I think for me, one of the things that I want to just kind of put on Dr. Pedroza, I'd ask for, not now, but in the near future. And I understand some of the nuance around when and why we recall teachers, and particularly as we're navigating, continuing to navigate the financial situation that we are in. You know, August, October 1st is kind of a deadline, right, as far as attendance goes? And my assumption, and please correct me if I'm wrong in this assumption, my assumption is that the reason why we haven't recalled teachers, or why we weren't able to recall teachers earlier, and why we're using substitutes, which is curious to me, but why we're using substitutes is because of the, like, the uncertainty around the attendance numbers?
It's a combination of that. I'll go through that. It's a combination of that, as well as some last minute resignation. Okay, and so it's a combination of many factors, and probably there could be added some more, but so the combination of several factors. The last minute resignation, one or two in the building, I believe there's one of these last minute transfers, and then holding off on some of the annual pieces as well. But we're moving ahead, moving forward, and actually hiring and transferring teachers. When we have to do some internal transfers, we have to monitor our enrollment numbers. Our enrollment numbers are committed, of a state for the record, pretty accurate in all of our schools but one. And so we're working on those internal transfers and then the finding of books. But there was a one or two last minute reservations also that also impacted some of the issues that happened at our schools, not just one school, our schools, because we had other ones as well. It's a lot of stuff. Yeah. There are a lot of hunting pieces to this.
All right, so we'll now move to, just to make sure, just know about that. Okay. Thank you again for, one, I just want to acknowledge, like, your continued commitment to the district, regardless of the fact that you are not here any longer to table reviews. So thank you so much for being here. Okay, so we'll move to our reports, beginning with our student representative report.
So again, my name is Alex Rooster. I'm senior student representative. And first thing I want to report is, this past month, I along with Dr. Pedroza and one of my peers, Eliza, which is also a senior, attended the education roundtable with the Bill and Linda Gates Foundation and Scholars Aid. And at the meeting, we focused on undeserved students. The roundtable focused on improving post-secondary success for traditionally undeserved students. And we discussed disparities in post-secondary education access, and especially in low-income and minority communities. And we looked at that, and actually only 50% of low-income families pursue a post-secondary education compared to like 78% of the adult near peers in the states. And we also, we also discussed the definition of post-secondary success, which in the education roundtable is defined as success as empowering each student to earn a credential that guarantees upward mobility and financial stability, which is critical since 60% of jobs require some form of post-secondary education. And we also talked about the impact of AI on the job market. A key point was the discussion on how AI will disproportionately affect jobs in the service sector, which are jobs that don't require a post-secondary education. And the Bureau of Labor Statistics projects that 65% of jobs in the service industry could be automated by 2035, raising conservative of future job security for students without advanced skills or education application. And there was also a case study that we discussed during the meeting at a low-income rural Oregon school district. And it managed, the school managed to prepare 85% of its students into higher education, even though 70% of the population came from low-income families. And the success was attributed to focus mentorship and school leadership and high expectations for all students, which is one of our district's goals, actually. And we also looked at that on post-secondary credentials. We learned that 60% of students in Washington who start a post-secondary program finish with a credential within six years. This completion rate is much lower among representative groups, with Black and Hispanic students graduating at rates of 15% or lower than their own county. And Dr. Pedroza actually helped me and Eliza the opportunity to write some correspondence in newsletter to talk about our experience there. So I'll just read it to you guys when I roll through then. So I said, in educating, I mean, attending, educating, the education roundtable in meaningful insights into the changing job market and its relation to post-secondary education. As we discuss how AI is impacting jobs, particularly in the service sector, I realize that this will disproportionately affect students who don't have the support systems needed for the pursuit of post-secondary success. This showed me just how important it is to have high expectations for all students in the name of our success in the future. And Eliza, who also attended with me, she reflected on how attending the Gates Foundation education roundtable made her feel supported and hopeful due to the proactive efforts of educational leaders advocating for students' success in Washington State. The discussion of inspiration resonated with her, leaving her motivated to create positive change for others and eager to continue advocating in future events. So, yeah, moving on, this month, I actually had a meeting with Naomi, our Communications Director, and the impact for the Up for Media for the Student Surprise Report. And we just discussed advertising, like, lunchroom visits, emails, social media tickets to get students to apply. And we also discussed maybe having classroom presentations and having a social media presence to get most of them engaged. And we also updated the application to a Google form. No more recommendation from a teacher required, just so that it's more accessible to those students that may not have access to that, may not feel comfortable for any reason. So, yeah, our structure for, our technical structure for 2024 to 2025 will be around the theme of safety, since that seemed to be something the students are passionate about this year. And this year, we actually plan to work with the recent equity leads in the district and be more in alignment to vehicles and happen to be more in alignment with our booths. So, yeah, and I'll stick to end up key dates to remember. October 2nd will be our welcome back meeting, and October 9th will be our launch meeting, where all the new applicants be in that meeting. And October, we're going to focus on anti-racist discipline, which is also what we will be discussing in our race equity meeting this later this month. And lastly, this month, I had a meeting with Dave Larson and David Knight, which is a specialist in education at the University of Washington. And we just prepared for our last presentation on school funding, and they both had incredible compelling points about funding disparities and discussions about equality versus equity. And I'm currently crafting my part of the presentation on the student perspective or of the student perspective on that aspect of this issue. And, yeah, that's all.
Thank you. Thank you. That's all. Any questions, comments for? Thank you so much. All right, next, Dr. Pedroza. All right, thank you, I have my notes. First of all, happy September, everybody. I just want to make sure that I just shared at the beginning of the year, while there were some continued things that we can always work on, that it was overall, transportation, food service, all of those pieces. I just want to give a few updates. There has been an uptick in absences due to COVID-19, so that's happening. And so we're going to publish, one of the things we talked about, publishing the latest guidance for staff, because the latest guidance on respiratory infections like the flu or RSV has simplified protocols for returning to work. So, please, staff, we're going to put that in the staff weekly update, so please look at those updated protocols. Open houses have been in full swing, so Tepulah Elementary and Shawlton Middle School had their events over the past two weeks. Cascade View is this Thursday, the 26th, and then Foster High School will be October 3rd, and Thorndike Elementary's event will be October 10th. For families, and please note your school newsletters. September 17th was National IT Professional Day, so we want to thank our IT department for all you do for our district. They've been always amazing over the summer and doing extra things to support and get us ready, and they had to do it with less staff this year, so I just want to thank them. It's also National Hispanic, and I'm going to call it Latino Heritage Month this month, September 15th, October 15th. If anyone wants a button, they're right here, or a keychain. So, but it's very exciting to see all we do to support our Latino cultures in our district. I want to thank our security team and the school and district staff for our focus on safety. There are national and actually local social media threats to schools happening. We're trying to keep our pulse on it, and we're communicating with other districts to ensure that we have all the information we need. And through a case-by-case basis, we did have an alert to something last Friday. We worked with our communications and our school to address that, but luckily, there are threats right now, but we take everything seriously, and we're treating every, anything that's posted on social media. We are using our upfront assessment to offer all of those issues, all of those, anything, anything, we take all of that seriously, just to make sure the community can move that. This Friday, members of our staff will be part of a panel focused on supports for refugee students at the Refugee Community Building Conference. I want to thank Mr. Lopez Chavez, Ms. Abdo, Mr. Christopher, Dr. Premstad, Dr. Crawford, for our continued focus, were to be presenting this Friday. I just want to share also for community transportation is a growing concern around our elementary schools. Parents, please follow the guidelines of your principals for drop-off and pickup. During the first two weeks of school, our district admin staff actually did drop off and pick up. So I observed Tepulah Elementary, I observed Cascade View, and I observed personally Thorndike Elementary, and I think everyone here has as well. And we have some families that just ignore us, not all of them, but some. And so they're not following the rules or the guidelines, and so it might be a language issue, it might be an understanding issue, or not. But I just want to make sure that, please, review the guidance. And then we're also working with the city of Tepulah, so I have a couple members here working with their safety group. And I do want to thank the police officers for their presence and support in this week. But we're going to be working on some additional district white communication to support some of this transportation. I also want to congratulate our Aunt Julie, our McKinney Bento Quality Specialist, who won the honor of Puget Sound ESD's Classified Staff of the Year. She will be attending in Olympia, what Chris Merkel's hosting an event in Olympia, Washington, this Saturday. She will be there with the other seven honorees, were additionally, additional state classified employees of the year from all around the region, and the eight certificated teachers of the year. And then they will announce the finalists for the state classified and certificated staff of the year. So we wish Julie the best this Saturday, and I will be there to support her. Our SRO officers started in our schools in the beginning of September. Right now, there's currently one, because one's on pulmonary leave, but he's supporting both the schools and checking in with both of our principals. They say, report that everything's going really well, so I just wanted to give that update. That's a lot. But it's start of the year, it makes sense. Any questions? All right, so next is our board director reports.
You start, you know.
All right, fair.
So it's very tough to follow our student representative that, because, thank you for all you're doing, and being students of the district, everybody doing what's happening out. My report is very short, I didn't have a lot of ability to get out about this time around, but I did what I acknowledged, that the Washington State School Directors Association had a general assembly meeting, and tried my limit, but I just couldn't get to the meeting, but I was following a lot of the politics on Canada, Canada, or Dave, especially on one particular item that I don't know was taken about in the meeting that you didn't mention it. So, and then second, there was a, I think it was a Facebook, I know it falls, social media, Dr. Pedroza. But there was someone who had been administrative person in the past, who was asking, when we have a threat situation, are we following some protocols, not keeping kids in the schools, it sounds like, before? I knew that, too, you do all the answering, you might have partially answered it here tonight, but I am very curious about the differences, because I knew on the board, not looking to find flaws, I mean, we have these 10 choices, and we chose this one, you know, this is what we wanted to follow, I'm not really involved in that. So, that being there, and very good to hear your report on traffic changes. We hear from the neighborhood, there's letters and things that are coming your direction, coming from faculty and staff, but also hearing from neighbors. And one of the questions I was not able to answer outright was, did we renew the, some traffic control up at Cascade View? And it appears so by empirical study. Is that just because we can't staff it, is because we decided that program, whether we're supporting, is it just us seeing for our students? Those are the questions that I have along those lines. And we can take that offline just as well. I just don't know the answer to get to the, and there's, there's more than one, seven eight question.
And that's my report. Is there anything that you, though, that I have not, lawyers?
Well, I'll just share that, you know, we, we talked about elementary schools, and so we have two of them, have, one has a standing volunteer workforce. The other ones would be, you know, getting their safety controls up. So in the meantime, we have mitigated with extra staffing and extra resources for those, any schools that are lacking, be their safety patrol or consistent adult outside. And so we've mitigated for that. So just letting you know, it's burning until either one of those things are put in place. We've done that.
Nothing to report?
All right. So for me, just kind of what to bid, I have also been able to be out as much as I'd like, but I had the opportunity to get into one of the after-school programs at Thorndike just last Friday. And while enrollment is lower right now than I'd like it to be, I feel really just pleased and happy that they're there, and that I know that the, where the Hills Club is working in partnership with the schools to try to draw what the best possible for increasing enrollment is. I've already been talking to them, sorry, a lot to actually do about that, but just got some other strategies that we might can do to support that. I do think that there are some curiosities that I have, and it all just came up recently, so I had a few in our, back yet, but plan to, particularly around, you know, you're still recalibrating that we as a district need to do when it comes to a partnership with after-school programs. The actual organs that we've had in our, in our schools, at least since I've been on the board, and I think previous to that, have been connected to the 21st Century Grant, which typically requires something of the school to be able to support those programs. This is a different type of program, and it is not on the responsibility of anyone in the school building, whether that be the administrators or teachers to staff or support the programs. And so really figuring out what it looks like to give that program some autonomy, as well as providing the support that they need, whether that be space, mostly space, right, or resources, to be able to actually have what they need in the building to be able to fully implement a high-quality after-school program. So, and one of the things that I think came up in my discussion with them, and again, I apologize that I did, we think I talked about this before, but just thinking about like the, the operating of after-school programs when school is not in session, so during those non-school days, which I think is a really important time for parents who need care for their young people to be in an after-school program. And so whatever it is that we need to do as a district to put in place to ensure that they have access to a building, even if it's consolidating all three of the elementary schools into one, for those non-school days, so when we're on break, with the exception of holidays, of course, I think we need to figure out what that looks like. In my previous experience in after-school programs, you know, as long as there's custodian in the building, then we could be there. It doesn't require a principal, it doesn't require another administrator, it doesn't require anyone else to be on site. I think that's where really having a trusted partnership comes into play. I think that's where really having a trusted partnership comes into play. Um, so I really think, and just continue, I know it's the first year with the Boise Hills Club, and they're just kind of getting their foot in the door. Um, but I think we have, again, as, as we do with most things, being a small picture, the opportunity to like do this better, um, than I see it happening in our districts. And oftentimes, what prevents after-school programs from being really successful is the power dynamic of the schools being in charge, right? And being able to dictate, um, so many things about how they operate, when they operate, um, that really does impact families. And I think it's important to remember that we are all here, um, with the after-school program, our, all of our employees in our district, to serve our young people, right? So we have an opportunity to actually come together in that, um, rather than kind of having this back and forth, um, that can often happen, um, and resource holding, power holding, um, that I don't think is intentional, um, I just think it's a, it's a, something that we just have to recalibrate in our district, because this is a new partnership, a new way of doing and partnering with our after-school programs. So, um, more to come, we'll, we'll connect, and we'll talk a little bit about that another time, but, um, it was exciting to see that, and I'm excited that they're there, um, and hopefully, um, we'll see the technical incentives, um, as we get closer.
Well, this is important, I'm wondering what you're suggesting for drop-off or pickup. I'm glad to see that that was a video, and I will be served with a back ticket without Thorndike, I shall give you the guy, which is hard. Uh, but, and there's other things we'll work on, but I'm going to deal with the rest of my time.
So, um, I'm going to start, there was, there's been some articles, um, um, in the paper recently about, that, that during the COVID time, there was a lot of legislation came from the federal government, and some of it was directed, uh, for students experiencing homelessness and, there's articles published that point that a lot of school districts, uh, had not spent all the money they got. And I'm just happy to report that we are not one of those, we spent all the money that we got, which is, um, so good job for all the folks that, you know, took advantage. We have some great folks that worked in that area, and, uh, we took full advantage of all the money that came there, so that it's going to be turned back to the federal government. Um, I attended the Showalter Open House, which was very well, um, attended. It was interesting, they did a really nice show, they had, uh, translators there for, I think, seven of our top languages, um, including, uh, Portuguese, for which we don't even have a community liaison, but they went out and brought translators to the community, so, um, lots of support for the, uh, the new, um, immigrant folks, and, uh, some have been around with us for a long time, and, it was, uh, the, the new SRO, uh, was there, um, talking to folks and students as well, and, um, it was interesting for me, when I was walking around, they had various classrooms set up, so parents could go and see what was going on in different classrooms, and then, the, the two most popular when I went around were science and math, which warmed my heart because I love to see, so a lot of interest in what's going on in that, which is great. So, anyway, I guess that was, um, I would be able to say so, look forward to the, uh, open hours, like some of the other schools as well coming up. Let's see, and, so I could refer, I'll be attending a, um, a focus group that OSBI, the Assistant of the State Department of Education is putting on, related to how we're going to kind of measure, um, uh, the, uh, students that qualify for free interviews lunch or property base, uh, going forward. That's a big issue for us for kind of obvious reasons, a lot of our money is tied to how that is measured, so it's really important, uh, I'm trying to get some information from our staff and different groups about, uh, making sure that any, any numbers they, uh, any methods they, uh, come up with are going to be good for us basically, and accurate, and after that, so I'm kind of looking forward to that. I want to think that's interesting is, this is the law that the legislature set up to go, uh, look at this, and, if you read the law that said, you know, they need representatives from the school boards, like I'm doing this because, um, the school board directors, so seriously, both of them are interested in, so I'm kind of representing the school board director, but, they also have to represent teachers and superintendents and so forth, but nowhere in there were the representative community groups, some parents and things like that, so, I fed that back to them, and I have a few community groups that would be raised, um, in mind, and also the academic, I mean, Mary Parker, the editors, you know, um, have been working with David Knight at the University of Washington, and he's got a lot of, um, ideas about actively to measure, so, anyway, I fed that back to them, we'll see what they do with it, but, and, um, let's see, so, yeah, so I, um, on Saturday or Friday, it was all day, the laws, uh, and school directors associated with general assembly, which is where we vote on, on the various, um, positions and so forth, and, um, there's an interesting, uh, time issue. One of the, the big things that was going on, there was a kind of a movement there to, um, um, kind of push forward what's called local control, which, the reason that's coming up is because the state has been passing at the legislative level, you know, a kind of mandates around inclusive, uh, curriculum and that kind of stuff, or racial inclusion, uh, you achieve you, and there's, there's no one in the state that doesn't want to do that, and so they're, they were approached to that and say, well, let's, let's push and say local control to override any, any of those kind of issues. Um, I'm happy to say that all of those local, and there was a whole number of them, I won't go into all the details, but, they all got defeated on pretty, um, significantly, which is, uh, good, that was one of the main things I was hoping would happen at this assembly, so that, so that worked, uh, well. Um, the two issues we submitted, a couple, one of them was to, um, look at, um, kind of legal, uh, options for, um, uh, dealing with the state's unfunded mandates, so we had that one passed easily. The other one, which was interesting, was, so there's a position that encourages all of the equity statement, uh, inclusive equity statement. And, uh, we put forward a thing and say, well, based on our, our students' input, that when we created our race inequity, say that, that we should have race inequity in there, given the fact that, that's what students are telling us, and given the history of this country, and we can't ever talk about equity without going into all the racial issues, and unfortunately, that one, um, did not pass. It's, there was an interesting dynamic, there was another thing that was going on, and, uh, that suddenly was, there were several, um, positions to kind of elevate student voice, you know, within laws and different things, and, and actually, some of those got voted down as well. Um, listening to the arguments against, against that was, um, people were saying, well, school board directors are elected, da-da-da-da-da, and therefore, you know, we need to take the responsibility, not the students, et cetera, that is a pretty weak argument, I hope, but, um, anyway, that kind of vibe was floating around, and so, you know, when I came forward to, to talk on this race and equity, including race, um, I was using the example that we had used, that we listened to student voice and that, uh, didn't seem to fly this year, but, a lot of these things are, you need to bring them back several times, and the timing is right sometimes, and sometimes it isn't, so, um, anyway, the next step in this particular is the prioritization, so there's like a hundred, over a hundred and twenty legislative positions, and so, in the, in the board acts, it's kind of included a couple of things. Um, one, a list of all the legislative positions, so you can look at them if you want, and then, what, what every district needs to do is submit their top ten. And this is not, it's not a sequence one to be forged, it's top ten or not ten. And I put in there, um, a list of them all, and the ones that, um, I just got this like a couple hours ago, so I haven't had time to go through them, do all the recommendations, uh, which I wrote for the day, it's going to come back in a couple weeks in our next board meeting. But I just wanted to throw it in here so you can have a chance, if you want to look at them. Uh, I put access by the ones that we ranked ranked top ten last year, and then I would see some ones that we kind of talked about last year, and then to just so you have an idea of, of something, so, anyway, I'll recall that back, and you can, the one that we did talk, where I actually, um, thought about right now was, the one related to recruit, uh, say attract, recruit, and retain for school board members. So I did some research on that, and actually, uh, two years ago, in twenty twenty-two, there was a bill in the Senate to allow, um, so, so right now, the laws have to be US citizens, be a school board director, but, uh, the change was to become a resident, so, um, so new, newer immigrants could, could, uh, be on the board, and, um, and that came up two years ago, um, uh, it got, actually, it came up as a bill in the Senate, it got through, then Senate K twelve, which you pass, and then died in the Rules Committee, so that was, before, um, what I'm thinking, so we talked about including this on the laws of top ten. Last year, nobody voted for that one, so, um, um, I think rather than, uh, putting it on our top ten, what's, what I think would be more effective is to, and I've included a letter in here attached as a draft letter that we could send. What would be more effective would be to send a letter to our legislators, saying, we'd like you to bring this back and reintroduce it, because that's going to, you know, the, there's already a lot of position in support of it, so it's not a matter of, of laws that are not supporting it, it's just a matter of, it needs to be brought forward as a bill, and then lots of people support it, non-American will support it, lots of people support it. So, anyway, my suggestion here, and again, um, I've put a, a letter in there, and I can, I do deliver it to our, uh, representatives, so that hopefully we get one of them to reintroduce that bill, and then crank it through the process again, so, um, I will bring that, if you have any, you can look, look at the letter, if you have any ideas and changing on, I just kind of put it together real quick. Uh, I can make those changes, we'll bring that next time, and then, uh, hopefully, I'll, I'll just sign it, and I can, actually can deliver it, and then we have a meeting with our legislators at the end of October, and deliver it to them at that time, so I think that will be more effective than, you know, putting it on the top ten, and the top ten in a lot of cases, a lot of the trouble, but if we can have other legislators actually put a bill in, then that's, that's a really good one, so, um, oh, the other thing I want to talk about, is any questions on that?
Well, pretty confident that our legislators will support that.
Um, at least one of them would, I don't know, we'll see, yeah, it's no guarantee, but, yeah, it's good. I mean, it's, it's really pretty, it wouldn't be hard, because there's already a bill there, all they have to do is pick it up and use it, so, um, let's see, the last, okay, so the other thing that came out yesterday was Superintendent Public Instruction, Chris Franklin, uh, came out with his budget request for the year, so the way these things work, you know, the Superintendent Public Instruction does his, and he submits his request to the governor, and they may or may not get included in the governor's budget, which is delivered to the legislature, and then the legislature, of course, makes all the final decisions on what's included in the, in the budget, but, what was, you know, so this is kind of the, the starting of a conversation about, uh, budgets, and, was, there was a number of encouraging, he's, he's putting forward, like, uh, two point nine billion dollars of new money coming into the K-11 system over the, over the next biennium, which is a big chunk of change. Um, and it's primarily in, there's four areas, one is special education, so he's been, uh, he's, uh, proposing to significantly increase what's called the multiplier, that is how much money we get for each special education student. So that would be definitely help for everybody, including us. Um, we had, you know, last year, or, yeah, based on our budget coming up, um, special education is, um, yeah, one point six million dollars in the hole, so this would, that would chip away at all of this, and it was starting to make significant, um, uh, progress on that, so that's, that's really good. Um, the second thing he had was, um, for about N-SOC secure side operating boxes, he's got like utilities and insurance, all those things that are going through the roof. So he's got another, um, uh, significant increase in that, so that's, you know, for us, that's another, that was like eight hundred fifty-five thousand dollars short, we are of that, that we use our local money for, so that would be, uh, significant. Uh, the other one is, um, yeah, that's, thank you, two considerations, and that one, uh, again, we're running like, uh, you know, eight hundred thousand dollars short of that one, primarily because of the new little silent teachers and all the, uh, any vendors that are being on, and this, what is reported is specifically fund, uh, that category, and, uh, some kind of education, special education students, so that require, you know, a different bus, of the regular bus, so, again, all those three are, are very helpful for us, so those are all good. The one that's got weird was, he's actually proposing, uh, a significant increase in the, uh, what's called LAPI poverty, so this is, I mean, it's a, the program that's funded based on the number of students that qualify for free interviews lunch, which, um, is one I've been lobbying for, for quite some time. Uh, and there's two parts to that, one is kind of what everybody gets, no matter how many, uh, students, uh, or on a per student basis, to another quality free, and reduce, and then there's what's called LAPI poverty, which is extra money that goes to, to, to schools that are over fifty percent free interviews lunch, which is all of ours. And so, um, I've been lobbying, and Senatorables, uh, ordered to introduce the bill to double that amount of money, that could have been like a million dollars, and it did pass last year. What, um, Rayco's proposing is this weird thing, and it's hard to explain, he's taking that LAPI poverty money, and, and about half of it or more of it goes to schools that are less than fifty percent free interviews lunch, which is, um, bizarre, and we'll need some letters to kind of point out. Um, I assume that being done because he's got some political pressures to push more money to the wealthier schools, but, um, anyway, this, we, under that proposal, we could get another nearly two hundred fifty thousand dollars more, as opposed to the one million, it's actually one very easy to go, and that's still the real, I already sold, so, anyway, that's, I'm not sure where that's going to go with the governor's seat, but, um, anyway, all this, it's, but the encouraging about all those is, uh, most of them are, um, significant, would be significant benefits to us, and so we'll see how that, how that plays through the legislature, but, um, anyway, it's, it's good, I mean, you know, we've, it's, um, probably could be, you know, um, two or three million dollars to us if they could all work out well, which would be a significant help in our, in our vision, for sure, so, so, you know, that's it.
Uh, I just want to say, uh, as always, uh, I have so much appreciation for just your, you know, your strong eye and pulse on, on what's happening, um, you know, in, in, in kind of the larger, uh, system that will help support us in keeping us informed and all these things, so, thank you so much. All right, any additional questions, comments for, for the margin? All right, um, to move to approve the consent agenda. So, one, one, two motions in two seconds. Okay, I'll just say, for, for, bye. All right, um, next is, um, this, our continued discussion about our board goals, so this was started, um, at a work session that we had back in, I believe, June, um, where we started with to draft those goals, we talked a little bit at our last meeting, um, but felt it was really important that you had all board members present, and we'll be continuing this discussion. Um, so we had, um, the intention to draft three goals, one of them has been, um, outlined, um, at least, um, uh, moderately, uh, outlined, a few of action steps there, could it be more robust, probably, um, but then there are two other goals that, um, we, uh, had discussed, um, having, um, and, um, so I think what would be best is just two things, I think I'd like to accomplish today. Um, recognizing also that I think this is something that could be worked on, really should be worked on more in a work session, rather than in a board meeting. Um, but, uh, two things, I think I want to just think of quick look, really, this is probably more work director property, I still haven't had a chance to look at these yet, uh, but the, the anti-racist folder we have, um, which was, we committed to establishing at least one, uh, anti-racist goal, um, and so, uh, that's, that's up there on the screen. If you actually go all the way up to the top there, uh, that, that'd be great, um, to the actual outline goal, and then the steps, um, are below it. I think the biggest thing here is, uh, your department, again, I'll put you on the spot, you can totally absorb it, and we can touch base later, but, um, if there was anything insignificant that you felt, um, we needed to add or adjust, um, or adapt, um, again, every, all the other workers have had a chance to come up with this sort of advice and input, um, which you haven't, and then, uh, the other thing that I wanted to hopefully accomplish tonight is at least, incident, I sent it in a Google, uh, I sent a link to a Google drive a while ago, I think I can present it to you. Um, the other thing that at least I'd like to maybe accomplish tonight, um, even though we won't fully flush it out entirely, is at least to maybe get us moving on the other two goals, uh, we have the goal itself established, uh, for goal number two, which is around community involvement, we don't have any actual action steps um, around that, or really define about what we want that goal to, what it would look like. Um, and then the other one was about, um, uh, kind of physical oversight, um, specifically around, um, I, I believe, putting things in place to ensure that, um, we, um, are continuing, right, to get, to move in the direction of getting satisfied conditions, as well as what the board's role is, um, in continuing to make sure that we, um, are not getting ourselves back in the position we found ourselves in now. Um, so that's what I have to, just kind of setting the stage for this, um, uh, I'll be sharing this with you. Um, so that's what I have to, just kind of set in stage for this, um, uh, I'll reshoot this review. Yeah, so we were looking at, we could just kind of start to talk a little bit about goal number two. Um, so again, what we can talk about, and then one that you were really, um, uh, hoping to kind of, uh, take the lead on. Um, the idea of really establishing two or three mechanisms of gathering community input, so we do this in a really informal way, um, and we have. Asked, uh, to in for the district, um, to increase how we are receiving community feedback, but. When we think about these board goals, um, they're really focused on what we as a board are doing, not what we're asking. The administrative team to do, um, and so a few of the things that that kind of came up in some conversations that we're talking about before. Now, which I think they're really relevant here, is about like what would it look like to establish, you know, some action items around, um, being present at a school, when they're going to, uh, have lunch. Uh, with students, or, um, just be more available, um, so anyway, I I think that, uh, just talking a little bit about. What this might look like, and then I don't think the work of putting those action steps. In writing these necessarily happen, what we can kind of reference from what we think that might look like, and then, um, someone between now and our next meeting, uh, can try and crack this into some concrete actions. If that's, you folks have some questions?
So I'm just trying to understand the strategy in three goals, and we have two kind of identified here. Are we trying to do one that's like policy-driven, uh, and then one that's, you know. What we do in terms of interacting with community, and then the third one is.
Yeah, so I mean, I think there's not, there's not really like a prescribed, we need one goal around this, one goal around this, one goal around this, I think these stemmed from, uh, the board self-assessment that we did back in June. Um, and some things that we just kind of high-level identified as things that we wanted to increase our focus around. I I did say that then that I wanted to have one that was really committed and focused on anti-racism, since that's where we're, you know, trying to be really intentional around that as a district. And the other two just kind of organically came, uh, organically came up, um, in our conversation about. So, does it have to be these? No, I don't think so, but if it's not, then I really want to get us to a place where we're grounded with tools far, um, so that we're, you know, we don't, we already. Almost end of this September, um, and so we're in this full year, right, we should be moving on some of these, um, actually, no, I don't think so. Since I've been on the board, this is the first time we've had board goals, um, so this is a new, a new process for us, I think, um, and so, um, what we have is better than what we had in the past, so I feel good about that. Um, and, um, I think this is definitely a practice that we should, you know, get more scale at, um, as a collective board support team.
So, the second comment is, do we have a board strategy? And from that framework, are we, I don't mind what goals we picked out here, but are we considering goals that are buttressing? Our strategy as a board?
Um.
Racking my brain out, knowing that there's a document out there, and then we've had.
So again, these were, these were, these were kind of came out of our discussion after we did the board self-assessment, right? So we, we did that assessment, we kind of evaluated, uh, how we were doing as a board on a variety of different items, um, and through that, so, you know, and I guess. You know, when it comes to strategy, I guess I'm not. Is it aligned with specific strategy? No, but is it aligned with what components make up a highly effective board? And, uh, in some ways, our strategic plan, right, and then also just, I think, how we need to continue to, yeah, so, yes and no?
And I think part of it too, just just as far as, we needed to make the example of walking around with people coming up, talking to people, who are going to say some things. So part of what I have, is I've got maybe one email is all, you know, there's no real community back and forth of, if someone comes here to sit here, and a lot of people that. You know, the issues are really happening, no, aren't able to come to the board meetings, or access online computers and by that, so how do we? Engage the community, so I think out of kind of the assessment, it was like, oh. If I think we're going to be an effective board, how do we, how do we hear from the people that actually, you know what I mean, and so just trying to clear out brainstorm's ways. And then putting that into an action so that whoever comes after us, they're kind of responsible for kind of carrying that on, or figuring out how do we better engage. Um, the community, the students, staff, who everything, you know, that's there, because it's kind of, I mean, for me, it's kind of a whole bit, you know what I mean? At least for me, for sure, because, uh, you know, I haven't made it up to this goal, you know, I've seen some things, but they don't, they don't know why, and we're ready to get them out, so. How can we get away from the, you know, the whole bit here, you know, in the meetings, and then having other strategies, or or things we're willing to commit to. You know, extra outside of doing this part, and so that, I think that's, I know that was part number two, kind of what was being part of it, so, you know, you want them to represent everything here. Yeah, and so for me, I'm, you know, I'm I'm not out there and doing that, so it's just as far as how we, how both steps to be oriented for them to take. So that we're more accessible. Yeah, yeah, it's going, and, you know, you don't have the superintendent sitting right here, and you can come, you know what I mean, there, there's just, it's just a different dynamic, right, like, than us kind of seeing.
Meetings in a school or coffee shop.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We literally are elected reform representatives, and that is so, it's all sets that you want to engage, so that makes sense to me. I don't, you know, when it comes from the principles of the assessment, how I mean. How the assessment questions are formulated, maybe they're coming off of a model, we should look at that model, and then we'll, we'll, we have gaps, and if it's in outreach, that makes sense to me, right? It just feels like there ought to be some, like, model, and we look at it, and go, where are we reading, and if we're looking, uh, uh, you know, our anti-racism approaches as a board. Then, I'm okay, you told me that that, that was one of our, we considered.
Well, one of the major needs for.
Right, the intent of time.
Well, one of the major needs I know that came up that we had talked about in June was, is basically visiting the schools that were, and, you know, in our district, and we should make that time to do that, right? I don't know, I mean, I mean, it sounds like some of us have been going there, and then, and then also then, so dedicated to say. You know, you would do Cascade View, and you know, you report on Cascade View when you came down, how you can. Well, you show up and do that, so, or remember, these are just kind of some of the ideas that were shot out there, and so we're just trying to get a framework, something that. Okay, whoever sits in District Three in the future, you know, you're going to be responsible for, you know, on this part, and so trying to get that, so there's more of a board. Base out there, I think, that's cool, that idea, so whatever ideas are, we're just kind of shooting from the hip, I think, at this point, as far as like. I don't know if there's anything drafted, I think we're kind of handed to some some uncharted waters, because what we're doing, we're just trying to put something down that. Uh, makes us more accessible, so, you know, whatever that kind of looks like, I'm more just trying to figure that.
Yeah, I think it did come out of the board self-assessment, I mean, you're just like, that was the structure and some of the things that it felt like, you did it with motivation on that.
And that's probably why it was.
Yeah, yeah, so what I'm not is totally memorizing what was in that question.
Yeah.
In that, you are, and we, we, here's the problem, because it was bad worries were there.
Yeah.
And we would come up with these goals, and I think the communications that you gave, the opinion on schools, it's quite.
So I think we could, um, I think we spent three hours at a Saturday session. Going through that self-assessment and identified these things, so now it's like, how do we actually make these actionable?
Yeah.
So we could go back, and, but to me, that doesn't feel like a, well, I don't have anything in the dark, well, we're going from, yeah.
So, I know, it's, I was sort of like, what, is purchasing the, for one, their front, so the idea would be. Uh, what we talked about is each of us would take a school and visit the school, you know, um, planned, that could be all. And so then we would, and then we could rotate through, and I don't know what timeline it would be like once a month, you know, like something like that, so that we could go through. You know what I mean, and to talk with, and then also. You know, I don't know, I don't know how to get like, I don't get any emails, I mean, you know, barely get anything of what's going on, you know. That's out there, how do we hear from, how do we hear from people other than, of course, the public comments, you know, part of it, but. Once we hear something, it's, it's already taking place, we're, we're kind of down low on some things, and so. If, uh, it'd be nice to those of me to get a part of some different things, and different, if, I have to come up here, you know, that. I'm not always aware of, and so I just, it's hard to go back, so I'm just trying to figure out what. What we can come into, you know what I mean, and and do well, do that, overdo it and not do it well, so how, what we can enter, we go, so that'd be one of my thinking was. What does that look like?
So, I'm always a big fan of of kind of, if we can, plugging the things that are already going on as opposed to us, you know, everybody's busy, and.
Yeah.
Everybody's trying to create some new, so, for example, something that we were doing kind of in this for last, so it's this, this civics class of that, um. And that's get direct, direct input from students today, so that's a good thing, you know, I want to do this to do, I mean, I know, I think you probably went up there last year, and I've been up sometimes, and so. That's a good one, the, um, the family nights, I, you know, I didn't get to the one that was on that, I'm a follower to last year, but I tend to do that one, you know. That's another one, you can go, we're kind of here from parents. Um, the the light flowing on right now with open houses, and you can go with those, because there's parents and students with there. Um, uh, you know, so, uh, oh yeah, there's, uh. You know, I sat in on one of the student advisory committee meetings, that was really informative, um. So there's, yeah, and, you know, we could sit down on the the raised equity committee meetings, I mean, there's a whole bunch of things that are already going on, and we just. You know, sat in on, that's part of the meetings, other things, I'm, I am a kind of a fan of, of maybe doing some more, a little more intentional school visit, I think, as well. But there's a bunch of things that we can plug into.
So I think like, we're just kind of listing out those things, I think there's like, the balance of where we just go to be visible. And where we might hear some things, right, we might get some information, um, and then where we're creating intentional opportunities, where we, and the focus is. Getting feedback from from community members or staff, um, uh, so I think, you know, having a a mix of vote, uh, would be really valuable, I think the civics class. Definitely something that could be built into the goal, so I think that's something that I'd like to be, something that is, having a little more basis that's consistent. Um, I think there's more opportunities for that as well, as, well, actually, we was there last year, um, I was talking to the teachers about what it would look like for us to come more regularly, um, so maybe if it was even like. Yeah, I don't know what, I don't, I don't know what appropriate cadence is, I also want to be mindful of like, let's start small, do some intentional things well, and then build on that in the future, um, and add more and more as we go.
One, um, it'd be helpful if we had a list of the kinds of events that are happening to our selves, and really don't know when all comes along. Um, and maybe there's a calendar spills out the future that we can just go look at, that parents often know about, I don't know what it is. Um, but if it's this month, I don't get far to kind of align yourself, and thirty day bracket and make fun of everything. Um, and with the town civics class, yeah, I'm going to compare the, um, city councils, where are three people who come at a time, and two who come here. We just chose to run in like days, um, so that more of the council could go, I think it didn't really happen last year, but it did like this year's.
In the past, we had a schedule.
Yeah.
It's just, I think that's challenging, that has made some relation with like Florida, yeah.
Yeah.
You know, um, depending on, so I must have actually coordinated a schedule.
Okay.
And it was a lot.
Oh, yeah.
I don't think it's interesting, we have run rarely in the past, is, um. Like, at schools in the morning, sometimes, and I'm not sure they're doing it anymore, but parents kind of gather, you know, as they drop their kids off, will be. And I don't know, we probably don't do that much anymore, but, I mean, we have an occasion gone down and just talked to the parents about what's going on. And as is a kind of urgent of a sort, but, just another, another idea.
Well, it's very reasonable, like, visit a PDA meeting?
That's another one.
Seems like.
Or who, or is there a way to like get something out, like, if, if there's somebody that would like to have us show up or some opportunities, like. You know, that they could set up their, you know, this is going on, I mean, I've seen like different emails come through, like, in the robotics club, who's down in their, uh. Events, and that would be great to go see them, and I'm all about supportive, you know, with their stuff, but as far as being more intentional, being available to. Kind of Q and A and what's going on, you know, how to be.
So, let's not resume it, and see, I'll totally like, give you the floor in just a second, um, uh. I think it would be really valuable to have, like, planned a town hall or two. Right, but it is like a community, uh, like Q and A type of opportunity, and it could be specific to a subject or not. I think the idea of like showing up at a school is great, um, but it's only going to be as effective at like, so I want to make sure that those are scheduled also, so that we can actually tell folks. That that's happening, and parents can expect that, um, because if I was to wake it up, I mean, I may not have time to stop and check out the board record. Um, uh, nobody necessarily know what to talk about, unless I have like the time to really process that a little bit, so. Um, I think these are also really very good ideas, but I think about when we think about intentional ways to provide specific types of feedback and input. I think the town hall approach is great, I think the visiting civics class, and then we have some of these informal opportunities.
And I want to give a full.
Yeah.
So, that's a common question, but I, yeah, maybe more, it's super complicated, I think, how can we do that better?
Yes.
There's a lot of, I don't know, around it.
Yeah.
Look at all these people here, covered, right, uh, but a town hall, I think it's a familiar format, you know. You're not always anybody, but you have access, all our emails are on the website, they can, people can, and they do. They do, I mean, so can we do it better, can we do it more effectively and and in a way that people can count likes this. Uh, biennial town halls, and that people model their talent and know it did, uh, can it be around this much of stuff in the impact? I think some of the frustrations is people don't actually know. Why these hard decisions are being made, there's that, that, that's a place, but the other thing was, you know. I wouldn't necessarily know, my wife could just run up on me at the grocery store, and I don't want to be a thief, but like. I'm at the grocery store now, being the product house, but it's no different completely, the model, but I didn't, but anyway, like. I think being intentional to say, hey, we're transparent, we're accessible here, here, and here. Uh, I think if we stretch that too far, it becomes, uh, I don't think it's reasonable, I just, I don't think it's reasonable. Uh, I I'll give you, what were you going about, it's a little bit.
Hi, yeah, I'm Stephanie Aragon, fifth grade teacher at Thorndyke, also live in Foster High School, I'm a family member of current to close school district students. Um, I want to say that I think that if you have an ability to open it up and put it out there to reach out to teachers, I think that many teachers. Even outside high school civics, would love to have you come visit their classrooms, um, I teach in grade, and also learn about, uh, civics and social studies and all that sort of things. And it would be great for our students to meet some of you, and get to talk to some of you, and engage, um, at the most grassroots level with the students in the classrooms. Um, so I just wanted to say that I I for myself, speaking, would love to have someone visit, and I'm sure many other teachers would sign up as well. And I think that would be a real way to see learning in the classroom and participate and be part of that. Um, another thing that, um, thinking of all these great ideas about showing up to the houses and stuff like that. I know sometimes I've seen someone you present, and I know who you are, so I'm able to go say hello, but. If there was some way to identify you as a school board member, whether that's having a table at an house, having a name tag that says, school board member, please come talk to me. Um, if you are able to. If you're able to, um, plan ahead, and at open houses, uh, maybe come with a language liaison or have different days, so parents are aware. Monday, I'm showing up with a Spanish liaison, Tuesday, I'm showing up with an Afghan liaison, like those sorts of things, so that parents can have more access. Because I think the biggest barriers are knowing who you are, even if you're in a crowd, could they pick you out? And then, um, are you available to come talk to, and then do they have access to ask you those questions? So, um, in a more organic way outside of the like town hall, you show up at something, and you are available to really engage with families and want that feedback. I think identification is a huge step towards that, um, yeah, I think.
Yeah. Um, so you feel like this is enough kind of information, yes, yes, so it's extracted and so that she says, okay, great. Um, and I heard from you that this is all filled, yeah, it's all right, no, no, no feedback or.
I think that's a word for it, to match, far. One percent, yeah.
Uh, okay, and then, um, okay, I think that's, let's leave that for now, uh, that gets us a little further, um, than where we were coming in today. Um, appreciate it, thank you so much, your feedback, I think that's so valuable, knowing all the different paths that you will wear in the district, um, and had previously as a, as a alumni, so thank you for that. Um, okay, great, um, let's move on now to our question-only presentations, uh, beginning with the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four financial forecast. What additional questions, um, do you folks have, actually, before that, I just wanted to refine folks, um, that may be tuning in about why these are, or or. The process for question-only presentations, um, the board gets, um, all of their presentations several days before the board meeting, we get the opportunity to provide written questions. That are, that, uh, those questions are answered in written form, uh, the, those questions and the answers to those questions are. That are, that, uh, those questions are answered in written form, uh, the, those questions and the answers to those questions are. Almost always uploaded into Word doc, so if you're curious about the type of questions that are being asked. Um, particularly if like, you sit in board meetings, you're like, well, why aren't I asking any other questions, it's because oftentimes their questions aren't even asked. Um, and especially if there's just a time for anything additional that might have come up. We did. Um, okay, any additional questions here on the financial forecast?
Ask a superintendent question, have you changed your policy on who, for instance, approves expenditures? It used to be just you and the CFO.
Yeah, we haven't changed anything.
Okay, and, uh, have you changed any of your rules on, I don't know, how, so from that. If faculty or anyone else wants to purchase, some of the staff too, I guess, wants to purchase something, do they go through a process of a purchase request process?
We have a purchase request process for everything, for special ed, for school based information, everything, um, what, we have, we've listed all the. Processes in place, one of the goal sets we have is to work with, uh, all our schools and our office managers. On making sure that they are properly trained or updated training on the processes that we're, and then, um. All of the, uh, processing that we put in place in terms of tracking control that we established last year, we hadn't let go of any of them. Now, the final approver, so we don't approve every, it does go through the CFO office, so I don't approve all purchases. Uh, the CFO and the accounting team, they work through their processes, generally for any school base or, or department, uh, POs or anything like that. Um, any contracts, so me and, um, uh, Ms. Fleming are the only final approvers for any contracts. For outside partnerships, any additional contract, we are the final.
Okay, I appreciate.
Yeah.
Uh, the follow up question on this is, so, so coming in and yeah, we're trying to get all expenses and go through certain channels. How do we know that that is or isn't intimidating or prohibitive in some way? And people don't have enough of what they need because of the process, do we do a sweep and say? With all, all staff, do you have what you need to go, uh, all faculty, are your class supplies and stuff in place? But what's expected, and we need to know where to go.
We should, and, you know, I will say, you know, I was actually at an elementary school recently. Where they had a concern about paper, and it was, uh, an, an issue with paper, for example.
Okay.
Yeah, so this is regards to, um, the business going to be as well as, right, because it's, because it's a needs report, it sounds like, uh.
I'd love to help or have some, uh, decision making.
Yeah, yeah, but the processes are, so in absence of processes, we've had, we've, in our discovery of last year. We've learned that there was some gaps in process, so we've established new processes. And there's growing pains, all right, because, you know, uh, there's a new process in place. We're trying to make sure that they're all aligned, right, as much, and we don't want to prohibit anybody from getting anything. But for example, sometimes the problem happens at the school level, so I was at a school, there were winter shortage, and I met with the principal, I just happened to be there. And found out that it was, uh, an issue in relationship to ordering that happened at the school level, and it just happened, and. So, but. And that was actually, I don't want to say anything, but that's about the principal now, having to make sure that that person is being properly trained, updated, and all of it. And we have some new office managers too, we have new staff in, in places, um, so that's taking a while to get it going up to speed as well.
I work at KPI and their hospital's been around for years, and then they feel good.
Yes, yeah, and I think, yeah. So I would say we've had some departments that have had absence of processes as well, so we're working in each of these, all those pieces, but I don't want the team to be here to answer additional questions. I hope I answered most of them as accurately as I can, um, but if there's additional, additional information, that would be helpful to ask you.
So I guess, as a follow up of that. When do we ask, if, if somebody is hoping to have X and isn't here, how do we, we're going to remedy that? Uh, we went, we, you know, for reasons nobody I can fill over, we ran out of MacBecks last year, and I was at. They're going away, you know, uh, thank you party for the faculty, and somebody piped up, and. Resources were coming, but we didn't know, and so I just found, tried to look for resources as well, and I think we've front ended it pretty well.
Yeah, yeah.
So, yeah, so I'm, I'm up to see the stats, right, and so I'm thinking, how do we know, we checked weekly, and we. Sent out a broadcast to people, and they're like, hey, is everybody situated, we got it, and they need to their classes? And maybe they asked for stuff they're not supposed to get, but maybe they asked for stuff they thought they were gonna, didn't get. Uh, maybe they got something that it wasn't what they thought it was gonna be, and so I'm just kind of curious, what is, what is our?
Yeah.
A sweep process, I think the visual sweeps or audit sweeps, what is our, what's our quality?
I'm gonna jump in as a new director, starting in July, so.
Okay.
Haven't really finished three months yet, but, um, I'm just a proctor, director of the future of education and call readiness. Really happy, thank you. Um, so.
Don't tell her, Pastor.
I'll take it, I'll take it, no, it's okay, if you're okay with it, I'm okay with it, but, um, in my, uh, role, I know I've absorbed. You know, some other duties that have, um, previously been part of another director's job, so first and foremost, I will ask for patience. We are going through the pains of consolidating work and workflows, so while. Person A may have been used to a certain immediacy and response time from a director or an assistant. We've got less of them, it will take longer to get those to happen, I know we live in an Amazon. Like that kind of world, but sometimes things will take longer, and really, I need that to just be aware, we're not being, um, you know. Negligent, we're taking our time. Additionally, we don't speak for our CFO, but I came into the position knowing that we have some. Financial challenges that we're working through, and our CFO is doing a fantastic job of monitoring that, and I also understand the depth of internal controls. And what I've noticed is, in certain spaces, there may not have been as many, and sometimes. Um, it's hard to hear the internal control saying no, like, or wait. Because we're really trying to get a full understanding of the landscape of our finances before we say yes to certain things. Um, I'll give an example, I mean, we're mostly in the secondary setting, um, I know, I've been spoiled to have a. Fiscal secretary just as dedicated to buying things, and they were super, um, knowledgeable of those things, but they buy those things in May and June. To be ready for September four, five, six, whatever that is. I would say it's a little bit unreasonable to ask for something on August twenty-fifth, to show up on September four, five, six. If you have been teaching for, I'm gonna throw this out, two, three, four years plus. You should have a general sense of cadence of what is expected to show up in your classroom for that to function. And so you should use some pre-planning to do that, and plan for that in May, June, you don't have the money to buy that in May and June. That's one thing, but you should know to ask for it in advance, so that we can provide it in the middle, the magic berries who work in the summer, we'll make that happen. And it'll show up for you at that time, so. I know specifically, um, as you're broadly describing some situations, I know I can think of specific situations I've experienced via email. Or in person where, um, you know, staff are struggling with things showing up on time, and, you know, don't mistake the heels, I can hustle right down the home. And right down the block to those buildings to make sure those things need to be where they need to be, but there, there just needs to be patience in how that occurs. And so, if we don't ask for things in a timely manner, they may not show up in a timely manner. And, uh, as we have to, you know, condense our finances, we need to really just manage our expectations, and I hope that people will. You know, grow with us or shrink with us, whatever that needs to be.
Maybe we should prioritize the students, like, if they are short on what they need with post haste.
Yeah, I mean, I think the, the, yeah, the intention is like. If there are things that are going to impact the student's experience, right, those things, how can we expect those things, right? And then we're now running on scares with each one step, but rather like, hey, these are the, again, things that we needed, but one thing that I would just kind of add to. That thing you described about like a teacher that has been teaching, you know, three, four, five years, really should have a cadence, and at the same time, like. If they've grown up in the Tuckville School District, um, that has continued to kind of, I think. Have some processes that haven't been super great, right, then there might not, maybe that's not a muscle that they've been able to develop, and so we all have to kind of relearn. Uh, that together, and so I think patience from staff, patience from you all, and then us giving patience to the whole system, I think would be really important as we finish back here.
So I just wanted to comment on, on one thing, so the, the current, um. Uh, unbalance for the end of the year, uh, uh, this is official, right? It's, it's now down to, uh, minus two million, uh, under binding conditions, I think that we are only re-gradating minus four point five million. So, I just want to tunnel in the sad, the massive, uh, progress in terms of getting it to where it is, that it's probably not due to a little variation to where it is. But, 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 but.
Well, and that's why I continue to be in the range, sorry.
Yeah, sure.
So, um, I continue providing that range.
Yeah.
Uh, because as we are building that into expenditures, and making sure that we've got categories, it's like a big puzzle.
Right.
And so, if you like puzzles, it's great, and you get to, and, and look at where it's kind of coded and what happened. Unfortunately, we have some a lot of time to base them as well, so, that's the mode that we're in, um, at this current time, and so. It's looking at all the expenditures, making sure we're classified correctly, making sure we're maximizing our grants, and you spoke of Vessar, um, and so just. Kind of going through all of the processes, and, and finding those, um, the leverage sources to highly leverage, which is what we're paying us, that's what I'm working on right now.
I think it's been bad to the projects.
Yes.
So, good job.
Yeah. Can you help me with line nine zero zero zero, I've signed on the original budgets, one point three, and then it kind of keeps going down pretty dramatically, and just wondering. Where did we, where did we come up with that, and how, what's the original budget, is this the original budget from? Previous CFO, or is this part of what, what is?
Yeah, so the original budget is from the previous CFO, and I don't, I was looking at records, and I, I didn't know where that came from, I don't know where that one. Twenty million dollars consisted of when that budget was created. The fifty thousand dollars, when I revised the budget, I dropped it down to fifty thousand, um, we have some specific accounting requirements, um, there are new. The column would ask the government of town standard boards requirements. Uh, where we're required to do some implementation of how we get our releases, so. Auto machines is a really good example of something that we have to look into, and there's special accounting rules that we have to follow now. Uh, that was supposed to be implemented in twenty twenty-two, uh, and Tuckville has been implemented, so. Part of what I'm doing is going through that process, and that's what this fifty thousand dollars consists of, this, it's just this new accounting requirement that we have to take into consideration. Um, but I don't know whether, I don't know where the one fifteen million dollars was.
So that's, that, so there's no way to look back and see what the one point three, because it's, that's.
No.
Very ambiguous.
It was very many.
There, so I'm not clear.
I, I wasn't either, I was trying to figure out when I was looking at the budget and how it was created, I don't know.
And is there anybody to track that was spent?
It wasn't since, um, as you look at my projected, I have one point five, um. I think so far, we, we've spent, uh, one, uh, one thousand twenty, um, and I think that's, uh, some additional cleanup that I'm working on right now, so it's not. Again, it, it, it'll be close to the fifty thousand, if it is even at fifty thousand, related to any accounting standards that we have to follow and report on our financial statements.
I'm sorry, my question was, was the, I meant, what I meant, my question is, well, the one point three, if you look back in the past, how was that, or is there a record of that?
No, no.
Thank you.
Yeah.
You mean, looking ahead, are you satisfied with the financial tools that you can give and work with, and, uh, where are you at the level? I've never seen a CFO come in and didn't want to shuffle the charter accounts around, so curious, I'm interested in doing that.
Exactly, yes, we're not, we're not allowed to, so it's prescribed to us by the state of Washington, our charter accounts are given to us by the state of Washington, to. Um, Office of Superintendent of Public Construction and State Auditor's Office, um, combined, and so. What you see here is, is obviously the summary form, but we have a very, very specific format, so that we are required to report, and there is no variation.
So standardized in yourself, are you standardized, so, and as, as to the tools you use for tracking all financials?
Um.
The right tools.
Uh, yeah, well, I, I use Excel, um, so I do a lot of my work in Excel, and that's always in my toolset, so. It's something I'm really comfortable in, um, so if it's information that I can't get out of the system, I'll dump it, and. Then if you want to do it in Excel, so that's, that's my toolset.
Okay.
And, so going back to that, just, not, not to belabor this too much, but as far as some of the checks and balances, it would just seem that if we saw this original budget. From the last CFO, I wasn't here, of course, but we did see it, and we noticed that there was one point three million with sign, these are kind of, especially when you're telling me that we have. Washington state mandate that we have to go by, this is budget being reviewed by E S P and O S P I, so they're seeing that also, I mean, it seemed like that would just. Raise some sort of flag to me, you know, that's on there, and why wasn't that caught before, and then it's not caught again by our. Who's supposed to be monitoring it, type of deal, so I'm wondering.
Yeah, I mean, sometimes the, the category is used if you're moving money from a different fund into the general fund, and it's generally from the capital projects fund into the general fund. So I wonder, I, I mean, I can speculate, but maybe there was a plan to move. Some actual, uh, money from capital, not borrowing, but actually moving the money permanently into the capital projects fund, but I can't find. Anywhere in the system where it would be a legitimate transfer that we would be doing, and so that's why I was really confused. Because it's not uncommon to see these types of transactions, school districts do do that on occasion, when there's eligibility to do so.
But I would assume with the record, if you can track the crack on.
Yeah.
That's there, so I, and I'm just wondering, so as far as, as that happens. I mean, these were just the things when we sit down, we're thinking like, mid this year, and talking about setting up some sort of, well, making sure this doesn't happen again, these are kind of some of the things I think we should. Be looking at and talking about, so, 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 so that, uh, I think that's kind of.
Alright, makes sense.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, there was before you got here, there was some bar, some bar.
Yeah.
Uh, so now, is there a year-end assessment date for the S F A? Like, if there's no question, we did both have.
So, this is, um, this is the ninety-one where it seems like, basically, it was, um, a data dump. Without any real analysis, so, um, I spent a little time, you know, kind of trying to do some, some analysis and digging under, so. For example, um, the first thing, you know, that I want to know, we have, um. Fifty to plan goals around, uh, S B A and finishing, you know, and so, for example, part of this, um, I would expect to see. Did we meet the goals, did we not meet the goals, and, um, you know, I think when I did that analysis, like that. Did, probably not, need to reading a map, reading. And probably increased by like three point something percent in math, we were down, and then. What was interesting was science was actually, we, um. Uh, exceeded that though by a considerable amount. Uh, thirty-one percent rather than ten, and so, then, you know, my next, I mean, for me, data is always this one question after another, once you first see something, and what's the next? So then the question, so how did that happen, did that huge increase in science come from, and it turned out it came from. From eighth grade science, and so then the question is, why, and we know that we got, we did a pile of it in this science grade, well. So then, you know, that immediately says to me, so we see those kind of, so we should be celebrating that and recognizing that. Uh, oh, it's great, and I mean, that may not be the only thing, I'm looking for, you know, more things, I mean, maybe the new science teacher, I mean, I don't know if it'll write it. That's kind of the level of things that I'm looking for, when we're looking for, rather than just kind of telling you that word on us. They, so what's the story behind, and then, you know, with, with math, you know, it went down, I mean, so percent, so then. Okay, what's going on with math, and we know, you know, we're doing a new, now, pretty good on the elementary grades, and so, and we're switching from kind of intervention mode to a more. Uh, push-in coaching model, so, you know, that kind of analysis to say, okay, yeah, we recognize that that was an issue, so here's what we're doing. So that's, I mean, that's kind of the analysis that I like to see in these things, um, the other one that I. the other one that I've been looking at for a number of years, kind of watching the fifth grade science scores, which um leaves this pattern of tech level elementary is consistently doing pretty well, and what about this consistently not doing well? So then, okay, what's the analysis there, what's going on, and you know, why, and we know, you know, partly from, and when the STEM labs were initiated years ago, tech level elementary got the full STEM lab right from top, the other schools did not, so I can catch up there, I mean, there's a whole I want to know, you know, why we're, you know, why these gaps are there, and how well we're doing to eliminate the gaps, and and we, and you can see this, you know, so that's kind of a whole variety of um analysis points, um the other thing, there was, you know, you said the difficulty regarding the food is about growth, well, there's actually some really good student growth percentage out of the data that comes in states, I took a look at that, and when you look at, when you break that down, so this is you know, um sometimes we sit, you know, if you're comparing this proficiency skills from one year to the next, well, it's a different group of students, well students go to present of state calculated is students, so it's following students, not necessarily allowed here, and so you know, when I go look at the wealth of data sitting down underneath there, and um I can see, for example, that you know, last year tech level elementary fourth grade moved students that are huge, you know, great, so you know, again, what's what's going, what's going on in tech level elementary, we're great, I see you know, the the show up there, uh reading, aging, straight up there, on the other hand, that gave you fourth grade was way down, you know, so I mean, there's kind of a wealth of data here that we can look at to to help evaluate you know, what's working, let's celebrate that, let's spread it, what's not working, let's figure out what's what's not working, so anyway, I guess that's, I just you know, I think there's a whole lot of, and I mean, I understand sometimes this is going to take a lot of time, it can take me too long to do this, but of course, I know obviously it is, um but, you know, it takes another month or two to to do that analysis, rather than just giving us kind of a big data dump, which I don't think really helps us a much, I'm much more interested in them, and although that's just my expectations.
Something that's coming up for me as well is no, I mean, obviously, there are significant disparities that we see, right, throughout this data, and in every data set that we see. And no surprise by the disparities, right, because those are, those continue to exist, they've existed for a long time.
Right.
Um I don't think it's a secret, I'm not fan of standard testing, I think that standardized testing, it like even in the title there, what what standard, right, and testing to, right, and who's learning styles, so I have to be just with standard testing, however, I understand that we also have to use it in some aspects. But I think this doesn't tell the whole story of what other people are learning either, right, this doesn't tell the story fully of, you know, you know, like the like street data stuff, but I think even more so like, right, it doesn't, it doesn't actually say you know, how well our Latinx students are really taken away from content, right, are actually learning, engaging their critical thinking skills and all the other things, right? So there's two things to the point that I want to make, one, I want to figure out how we can hear about that. Right, how can we get some other form of I don't even want to say data, because I don't want it to look like this, but how can we see something that actually demonstrates the brilliance of our diverse students, right, rather than just these numbers on a paper that just highlight the disparities based on the standardized testing? So there's that, and I don't know what that looks like, but I want to give you that out. The other thing is we talk, and I think it starts with discipline data all the time, right, and we say, oh, yeah, we know that there are these disparities, we're working on it, we're working on it, we're working on it, we're but yet what we should do is we do these recycled interventions, right? What I want to know is, what are we really doing to think outside of the box, right, something that maybe has never been done before, something completely innovative? Which I know is hard, right, I mean, we are in this system where you you know, most educators have been educated for a long time, right, and so it's easy to kind of, it's hard to see outside of your lens of whatever, but we've got to do something different if we actually want to take status quo education justice, right, we cannot just continue to do the same things over and over and over again that haven't worked in the past. I was in a training the other day, and as they were, they were, they were talking about equity, and if we're doing the same things, and we're not seeing the progress, and those things aren't working. So we have to do something new. I don't know what it is, I'm not the expert, you all are, but I believe in you all to figure out what that is. So again, two things I care, how can we how can we have something that actually demonstrates the brilliance of our learners? And then demonstrates the things that they are actually taking away, because I, there's, right, this is just not representative, and then 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 what are we actually doing that is innovative and creative, not looking to other districts, what are they doing, is our district is doing it well? There might be, but I don't think there are really, right, and then when we think about this large education system, we're all thinking, when it comes to this standardized testing, right, so um now something I have to answer right now, obviously, but I'm just, we can do better, and that we need to. Um and if not, then, you know, I don't really know what world we're in here, except for just perpetuating and churning these same things that aren't supporting young people.
I can respond, Dr. Perros has been talking with Dr. Proctor me about the same thing, and and compared to Larson, but this same good information, lots to think about as well as what you've just said, um so we've begun looking at again, major change of how we do, but how we collect data, we're not doing a bunch of our graphs now, and it's going to be the analysis, kind of keep down last year, we had SWOT analysis, strength, we just were challenges, opportunities, um and looking at what is, what have we learned, what we tried, and what will be different? So it kind of addresses what you talked about, so we've begun really digging deep, I'm looking at how will be significantly different um as we go forward.
I'll just give it, well, I was talking with one of our directors before about this, like, for example, looking at the data, one of the things I'm wondering about is you know, we have the model, that was a focus on the math area, and I'm curious now to think about moving like street data, we've got some anecdotes from the students. It was a lot of investment over the last few years, a lot of investment, but I am, I am curious about that, because because obviously that was something that was successful, we had some grade levels that actually did pretty well in terms of improvement and goals, and so I'm wondering what we can learn from that, because that was an intentional focus on our modern full learners, but specifically in math, but not just the the mindset of just, because we didn't do the curriculum, right, it was more about strategies, getting to those students, understanding their cultures, and so I just wonder, and I'm so curious about that, and what I'd like to do is take an analysis of, based on the teachers, if not all teachers participating. Right, so I'm wondering, um for example, we saw that show alter, perhaps, and so I know a lot of the show alter in those schools, math teachers were part of that, right, so I I don't know exactly, but I'm curious, right, I know some cascade teachers were part of that as well, so just kind of wondering about that, and also hearing from anecdotal community teachers, what have, if they even used that practice, was that beneficial to them that they applied, so those are like some of the things I'm wondering about, um because I think that that is worth it, and beneficial to really go deeper, and it's kind of like that street data from the teacher to the student perspective, um to get them, that shows that we're actually doing some things, then the question is, how do we best to start that around more, if I can agree with all schools, because that's what I'm curious about. So, and you need data to be part of that analysis and triangulation.
Of the types in middle school and high school, we were pretty excited about a program called Avid, and we'd see significant differences. I'm not saying that Avid works at elementary schools, but there might be tools that are similar in nature that address, you know, each of the elementary school level, is there some way we can help you in us with no money in our pockets, so, but is there some way we can start focusing on what those tools are, and finally figure out which is ways to fund it, because we don't make a difference in those situations?
We can certainly look at that, and a lot of the strategies that are part of Avid are unfortunately are zero cost, it's a strategy. So that, it's not a solution materials, but it's approaches, so that's the hopeful news, that we can we look at that to see what, what elements, since we had a topic with secondary teachers, what have they seen, which those strategies have been most effective with their kids, and we're developing folks to um try those same strategies.
Yeah, I think something that, I think, when we, maybe this is not maybe I'm thinking about this not correctly, because obviously there has to be some consistency in the strategies that are used. But it's definitely, we're talking about human beings, right, and so one strategy is not going to work for everyone. And so, and also, like, a strategy that works on one day for a young person is not going to work the next day maybe, right, and so it's how are we building, not just, yeah, so again, that that maybe goes back to like, how are we thinking innovatively and creatively to say not, here's just one completely kind of strategy that we've seen work, and so we're going, we're just going to now implement it across the district, um but how are we building, you know, the the toolkit, I guess, with lots of strategies, and providing the opportunity and the time uh for that relationship building that is so important and critical for teachers and for students to be able to then actually say, yes, this is the strategy, this is going to work for you today in this moment, and then tomorrow, which is next day.
I totally agree, I don't think there's ever a time where you could say this one thing will work even for this whole classroom, it's you, we need to um support the teachers so they have a variety of options, and you said, sometimes one day at work, next week you got to try it, but one day the more we can support the teachers in building up the toolkit, um then they have a lot more ideas to draw from when they're, you know, working with their kids each day. Now, all our teachers, we know they want to help every child to do their best, so we know the um uh spirit is there, and will, so uh just um so it's um training opportunities to cross, you know, observe others who they have found have been really successful with certain ideas, strategies, and relationship building, and so it has spread the um the the ideas that are working well.
Yeah, I guess one last question is, um I know, I believe in benchmarking, and but I also believe in benchmarking apples to pears. And so, because sometimes somebody's doing a subject so different, so did we talk to, and did we have measurements that compare similar populations, maybe in religious schools, are they doing significantly better, or are they having the same kind of scores? Similarly, you you can look um um in Muslim schools, I know we have a lot into quote, but we don't come into quote schools, because um certain religious cultural sensibilities about maybe even racism or anything else, um or, you know, things that we we advance and think are importantly transparent about, are they significantly better than our students? Uh scholastically, when they come out of their educational formats or the charter school? I just wonder, um not to want to just be like them, but if there are some things, tools or methodologies they're using that really steepen the curve and they end up with higher uh performance, like, what is it, and is there any of that magic test we could, you know, apply in public schools?
I agree, drawing from as many sources as we began, it's a great idea.
So I wanted to respond to a couple of things, one is there's a question, what standards, and the standards are a composite then for the E math and the STEM science standards.
I think by that I mean more like the standardized testing being like one way to test a student that like actually doesn't meet most learning needs of students, that's what I'm more of an action, I I
Oh, okay.
Sorry, that was another thing.
The other thing, I think that um yeah, you know, these standardized tests have gotten um bad names over the years, because they've been used inappropriately from a long way going back to no child, behind, and they're used to punish and all that kind of stuff.
Elementary schools.
Yeah, 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 and and but, you know, and speaking, uh they use it as a, as a kind of high satellite data at the start, here's, okay, here's, here's some information about the high level, and that's kind of tend to be where you should go down, and I think that's the proper way to use them, so hopefully we can use them in that way, I did the the issue about um different strategies is is quite interesting, the charter school, so a few years ago, I went up to um uh a charter school, it's a middle school around the same place center, and because I was looking at their test scores, and their test scores are significant, I mean the first thing I had, I think about, understand about test scores is they're directly four, they didn't come out. And so, you know, that does something, um and but that, I mean, I bet they were way, year after year, they're way above what they're, what they're expected to, and and what I found was, the answer that they're doing up there is there are two sophisticated teachers in every classroom. It's called co-teaching, and it's been shown to be effective in a lot of different so the question is, how do they do that, that costs a lot of extra money, and the answer is, they pay their teachers half of what they are. So, you know, so that's why I keep going back down to the states that, okay, if you're serious, I mean, if you want to fund these gaps you got to start giving us more money, because I know there's, I know a foster, there were some, and I think they may still be returning, some women in co-teaching, particularly um around special ed students and pushing in a special ed teacher into the math app, so there's, you know, and I I guess, I don't know I haven't seen any direct report about how, what it is, I, there's, the thing is, I talked to a teacher about snowballing um values to this great, that they've been doing this co-teaching model for number of years, and it is, it's not, it's not immediately obvious that you put two teachers together and they will work well together. So, and she said about fifty percent, she's been doing this for now years, so I'd say about fifty percent of nine words, fifty percent of dozen, so you just professional development involved, and so
Operation field sometimes.
Right, all that stuff, so.
And we also do it for M L L two.
Yeah, right, so anyway, these, yeah, I mean, um it's always good to go look at, you know, other places, and and it's always interesting to see what you can read back and what you can, and so on, but uh so, yeah.
Chief, okay, so I, and I appreciate what everybody said, I I definitely knew it, having a big picture, but for me, I'm going to kind of hold it down a little bit. So when I'm looking at what you have here, which is what you're giving us for, what my question is going to be pretty direct is, is that full of school district in the habit of moving students to the next grade when they're not ready? Are we moving kids through the grade systems, because I don't see any, anything here that shows that anybody is even eighty percent. So what is our, what's technical is, is there stance on this, moving kids through the district? You know, and they're not prepared, because I I I like what you said as far as all of us here the different things, we want to think outside the box, but they're real, rubber meets the road when they step out, building, they're, are are we preparing? Because those numbers, it tells me nothing. And so I want to know what your thinking is, where we're at, if you're leading our education, part of it.
True.
What does that look like?
We do, um uh we have a promotion policy, we are, um we usually consider retention as of last resort, and for a number of factors, um because we have to consider um the local welfare, the student who then is told for some reason, you're not going to, you don't get to go there extremely, little children don't understand what that means to repete grade, um and we have to look at, you know, social development factors, um so also looking at say a student, they who maybe had a very low score in uh reading proficiency, because they moved to America last week and they are fluent in their native language, but not English yet, they will, we'll get them there, but so sometimes the scores, uh again, just looking at a score um tells you what happened on that moment at that time that test was taken, so it it doesn't mean, this only doesn't mean every students, um we have way higher percent median standards, but that's where we look at the growth, so we get, we welcome them where they come from and where they are, and we try to grow, build every child from there, so yeah, there are, I'm sure there are a lot of kids who move up grades, um because the weighing factor of all of the pros and cons of moving ahead or not, it's um it weighs in favor of continuing forward.
So how many students are we, how many sort of then are we holding back, right, or or going down, and I I guess my my thinking here is, how many are are we doing it, because I I hear what you're saying, right? And um for lack of a better term, I like the participation with large, I get that too, right, but however they need to be prepared, right, and so how are stephens waiting for comparing them, you know what I mean? For both of, for those, but I'm not, that's I, in the elementary, yes, but when we're getting to older high school group days, that's not fair, because out there, that isn't going to apply, right? So how's, how are we a stephens school district, doing something like that, you know, more of an empower with preparing our young people until we get what we're talking about in place, but what does that, what does that look like, and the caveat also is the ones that are excelling, are they then moving up in grades, if we're doing a good job of doing that, that should be higher level and offering them higher level, you know, plus, that's over there.
And we'll figure, I think, that's actually a good point, and I I want to name it like, I'm not suggesting that we just hold kids back, that's not what I'm, what I'm, what what I'm about to say is suggesting, but when we think about outside of the box, right? But when we think about outside of the box, right, there, like, I hear what you say, but like, it's about, you know, thinking about the whole child, the emotional, the social component, right? Why that was the norm, right? To where it wasn't an exception to say, oh, this one young person is being held back, but instead we broaden classrooms and don't, I, I know, probably got a lot to think about, right, but broaden classrooms to say, okay, we've got maybe some mixed age, mixed grades, right? They're urban, and then this idea of, okay, so let's say you, you keep a multiple period, even have a classroom back, right? In third grade, and then once they meet that certain, you move out, right? Even when we're in the lead, I don't know, what, what crazy, like, they would have been, or when they are ready and they're actually application together, they get, they somehow get factored in. It's like, this, what kind of innovative ways can we say, yes, this system does, this system just churns people through conformity and movement through, right? That's what the system is all about. How can we do it different, right? Again, not recommending that we just hold kids back, not what I'm saying at all, but I think there's something in there. The same, and if our, if our reasoning is, well, we just don't do it because we don't want that one young person to be isolated and feel that they're the same, yeah, I don't want that either. Huge social implications and emotional implications. How, how we?
I, I'm for, let's, let's continue to build this discussion on that, and have a test to pay different. But I also think it's undervalued, the impact on socio-emotional development, that even if I move that soon, he or she has experienced academic failure, and that has a social importance.
Yes.
Um, and so, they both do.
Yes.
They both do, um, and that's rich and that's real, and I've seen it frontline and, and chasing the glory um from the African-American demographic, the reading efficiency about fourth grade is a pipeline for the rest. So by third grade, then I move to the fourth grade, you move to the third grade reader below third grade efficiency to the fourth grade. Like, that kid knows, I, I, I'm like it. And you're moving to the fourth grade, that doesn't make it better. The builder knows, he or she doesn't hear it. Then, by the tenth grade, it is not coming.
Yes, and you know, what you mean, it's a great complex issue.
Yeah, I, I, I do.
I just wanted to remind everybody, so we have a policy on retention, um, so just slung the bet out there. Um, so it's a promotion-retention policy, it's twenty-four, twenty-one. Um, we do, so that is allowable, retention is allowable, promotion is allowed, right? And it should be done at the school level, so every school has a team, right, a team, um, more than disciplinary team that actually supports through interventions, support, so when students are struggling, right, if the student is struggling, there is a process in place at the school level that they should go through to actually, actually retain. So, yeah, the student can be retained. Um, and then I just wanna also share that, um, they also, we have a highly capable program that is actually identified with the state, that we are also obligated, we are required to assess students for highly capable, and we're required to have a programmatic in place to support them, and not highly capable, you know, come out for you. So I just wanna share that, and then I will add, factors that get ruled out for retention are multilegal. Uh, severe homelessness, right, can be one of the factors, and special education services or a five oh four plan, right? So, and guess what? The majority of our kids, over fifty percent qualify for all of those things. So I just wanna remind the public that, uh, we have a population of more than fifty percent of our students qualified under MLL or special education and or five oh four, and actually, some of our students have all three or four of them at the same time. So I just wanna remind everybody that we are a high-impact district, and so at the school level, it is the teachers that know them best that sit down with them and work with them, and so they look at a variety of factors. I would say it's important that you look at multiple data streams, not just FBA. They have to look at I-ready, they have to look at the classroom assessments, they have to look at all this, all of these things, they look at that. And that is how a school-based team sits down and analyzes all of that. But I just wanted to put the reality there about what's actually, and how this works, and it's the professional, the teacher, and the team, the principal, and the school-level team that actually now, we can get that data, and we can look at the data over the last three or five years, and maybe there are some students that actually, I've actually seen a student got retained, actually, in a former district that I worked in, Jeff calling that's poor, and guess what? Guess what? It, it was wrong, so I also want to ask you that, too.
The question, although I don't consider it a remedy, is it part of the point of summer school, helps some of these kids catch up?
Some, sometimes it's like this ketchup for some of the kids, sometimes it's meaty.
Yeah, sure, to not leave.
Because there is, uh, for some of our students, there is a gap, or they, uh, actually the learning decreases, depending if they're too much time. Uh, cause there's a lot of stuff that's going on.
Well, when you think summer school doesn't come anywhere near the twenty-five percent that you're talking about, honestly, I don't think it, right?
Well, this, this level, you're performing, had about only two hundred students participating in elementary, and this year it was significant, I think it was reduced by, uh, two-thirds.
Yes.
So I'm kinda worrying, it seems that this is a very like, I know, I'm interested in, I think, continuing this conversation, and it seems that maybe what folks are as well. Uh, I'm wondering if this could be something that we just add as a future topic that our work session, where we actually have kind of the ability to really kind of dive into this, maybe even looking at the policy. I'd be curious to like hear some students' voice, cause you know, another thing I'm thinking about is like how this all, um, you know, intersects with the feedback we hear from the students all the time about how they're, they're not feeling challenged, right? Or, uh, you know, particularly at the secondary high school level. Um, and so I think there's just a lot to unpack, um, and I think those workshops, and we redesign them are really to kind of like whittle down to like the core of things and really do some of that created out of the box thing, so maybe this is something we can add. And if you look at our resource data, even if you just don't wanna look at it at four, but they are comparable to the state at the tenth grade level, just saving for the record.
Yeah, I didn't listen to the subject, like, talk on.
Yeah, yeah. So is that we're okay to move on from this, or we can, we'll, we'll revisit that? Yes, please.
I don't blame, I get here at seven thirty.
He is motivated for a good reason.
I need, uh, okay, next is the, um, involved report, uh, the Joliet Area District, all working to African student success. Four additional questions you folks have here. I think my biggest thing is not necessarily a question, more just a comment, um, uh, how are we, uh, I guess that is very simple, then. What, I can't, no, I can't not ask a question, not answer a question. How are we, um, uh, adjust, like, how are we adjusting the supports that we have with our community liaisons to accommodate the increase or the decrease in languages? Again, you don't have to answer it now, that's just something I, like, the support is great. And what does it mean for us in our actual, like, application?
Can you just restate the question one more time?
Yeah, how are we, um, using these numbers to adjust our staffing, specifically with our community liaisons and our language supports, um, to make sure that with an increase of students that we speak a particular language, we have increased staff support? And vice versa, right? If we move down in a language, uh, you know, how, how are we adjusting to make sure that we actually have the right supports? For the religion that I asked.
Yeah, so this is, so we did reduce from seven to three, I mean, to four, which is technically that. And the reduction was not based on the student, it was actually based on the work. So I just wanna state that for the record again, just to clarify your question, because, um, I wanna make sure that people were able to understand. And so, um, so our community liaison, I'm actually worried it's suffering more, because one of our community liaisons is actually having temporarily break down. So we actually, actually have a degree, when we think about the seven to three. Uh, one of the things we're trying to do right now, analyzing all of our grants that we have and opportunities for grants, and try to figure out a, how do we renegotiate some of those grants to get if we get some FTD? Um, and to bring back some of the things, there's also another grant opportunity coming up, and we wanna make sure that we, um, do that. And if we do that, anything we get in FTD, we're re-prioritizing our larger Florida's language groups, especially that we lost. So we're looking at all of those people, those things, the good news that we have is, is that most of the community liaison that did leave that position actually are still in the district, so that's the good news. Uh, so if we have an opportunity to have them come back, um, they're retrained, they're in the system. Uh, but that's where we're actually right at right now, is reanalyzing everything, so to see what we can bring back and prioritize first, the ones with bias.
And that was or was not something that we were able to negotiate and adjust in the new CBA? Um, it was, right, I don't, I don't, I, I, I think, I think we did, there actually is a clause, I will say in the CBA, cause I read it very carefully, there is a clause in the CBA where language can be considered as one of the deciding factors moving forward. So it's, it's listed under special ed, and I think it's under listed under reduction force and other things like that, so it is one of the factors included. Okay, so while we were impacted by the, the employer seniority
For this year.
Moving forward, we've got some different levers, uh, to ensure that we're asking.
See, I read your notes. I wrote the document too.
I think that's a part of these, these should be viewed as, as specialists.
Yeah.
With certain particular skills, kind of, you know, language that they need, so that's great, there we go.
But it is a priority, all the state is a priority for us to figure out how to bring back our supports and, because that is a priority. We're talking about it actually a lot, because, and we're actually having those conversations, right? Where can we pull FTD into the system so that we can at least get some, even part, part-time, maybe does anything to get some support?
So I hate to add to staff work, but I looked at this chart, I have no time to read it, because I was even, I look for patterns, and so it's alphabetical, I just own it, right? If it's the one who's, someone's the smallest number, but that's not the case here too, or if it's the ones who have the most growths, to the one who declined the most. That would make sense to me, that none of those patterns hold true, I don't understand why the rules are put in, are they just in the most highest priority? And then if there was an extra problem, if you just tell me where you have, uh, ample staffing to try to help with these, and where are we might have lost, um, folks? That would be important to me, and it could mean that, you know, I couldn't care less, and that'd be a big, big deal, I can't quite decipher this. Uh, and then maybe, I'm asterisk next to the ones you're gonna work hard on, I, I don't know how to read this chart. I can tell how people are declining, but I can't tell who wants to climb the worst, et cetera.
Oh, we're just talking about us, we're ready to map that.
I'm not, I'm not, okay, well, then, did I do it wrong?
No, I'm, I'm just looking, I don't like charts.
It's a little blue and white, yeah.
Oh, that's.
I'm trying to get my head up.
Okay, we're looking at all of them then once, okay, so I put it in.
Other than the fact I can tell some reduce to decrease, I can't tell what, you know, we emphasize or have mobility to resource, or planned resource, or have been resourcing. If that makes any sense to you. I couldn't figure out what to do with the chart, I'm about to, I can see that, you know, if you, it's gone down, yes.
Yeah, this is just an enrollment piece, and so, you know, really, in three more months, like, be meaner, be harder, I mean, really. I haven't been three months yet, so I think I know what we're looking for. I just am working with our straight-up enrollment data. And for those of us who don't like looking at actual numbers, I could have a little, a little. I thought no, I love that. So, and even, you know, my daily line of sign, we're looking at the Spanish, going, how's it possible there's five hundred sixty-three, two years in a row? That's bizarre, yeah, so the numbers show up, it just might be coincidence, but all the rest of the languages, for example, are reflected of in and out, students leaving, um, and entering the district. So that is, um, genuinely accurate as of September through our enrollment.
Right, and so I can read the Spanish line, I see that they would have a plateau, right? I can see the Burmese one, see that it went down a year, but what I can't tell, who had the greatest declines was about next to each other. I love the little mark charts, to be honest, and it was a quick visual sweep for me, and then, and then raising, but, I mean, just a little more information was like, did we have resources here? Uh, did we not have resources, were they all declining? Did, did, are there some resources that they declined, and some that we didn't resource and they increased? How do I decipher what's going on here?
Sure.
That's all. And then if, you know, as you mentioned, we went down from seven to
Four.
Four, three, and, uh, whatever the case, what are those, what are the?
Sure, yeah, and I guess, you know, uh, there, you like, put gloves, but broad way to describe it is, you know, from seven to three, we don't have four Spanish family community liaisons. With that being the dominant language. We have a broad variety of them, but the person who talks over Spanish is airing the bulk. That, we're lucky to have variety, but it is possible that, you know, some of our liaisons have, and I'm not saying lighter look, because we find other ways to make sure we're, uh, we don't let.
And we don't find that, check them up with the languages.
Uh, and they're controlled.
And a lot of it, I had some Burmese people
Right.
that were coming in, and ten years ago, now they're not, so that program's going down, and we were picking up French, which is going up.
Right.
But again, so.
It's a combination of looking at that and then meshing it with, with what's coming in with our CBA.
Right.
Because some things we notice are challenges in June, like twenty twenty-four, but the CBA doesn't get updated till August, twenty twenty-four. And so we're kind of playing catch-up, and so this is one of those situations where this is the current data that you guys have requested, and we will monitor and adjust and match things up as the CBA, um, is approved and enacted, and so it's not perfect right now in the transitionary period, but we'll get it there to mine.
But I can give you the community liaison information, for sure, the number of languages supported by the students, but you're right, even that number doesn't really talk about, for example, I can give you like the total number of languages and how many we have, but for example, as you see, Spanish is our dominant group, right? And so that, that has to be a priority, but we also lost, right? So when we think about, for example, Portuguese, right? That is a new language that has emerged for us as a huge language need. Uh, and we don't have anyone historically that has supported Portuguese, we're lucky that, um, you know, Brett actually contracted with a tutor in Portuguese for his open house. Um, we actually, it just so happened, the intern that's working with me this year also speaks Portuguese, so that's a good thing, I mean, just little things like that, but but that's, but that's now emerging as a need for us, right? You look at that, when you look at that, even compared, it's our, it's, if you look at the numbers here, just even like just raw numbers, it is our second dominant language, it's close to a hundred, but we don't have any, I get that support. We hired tutors last year, and we will continue to do that, and we have our language lines and all of those things, but in terms of the community liaison, because that is now our second main need. But even in comparison to example, Spanish, like that's, because Spanish is still five times more, five point five more than the Portuguese, our second was dominant language.
To add another layer to that, like, I mean, let's use a very simple, we understand Spanish as a language and to ask for it in general, and so we talked about the Spain Spanish and Latin American Spanish, and what I understand about our community coming in and speaking Portuguese, they're coming from Angolan, right? And so there's Portuguese from Portugal, there's Brazilian Portuguese, and then there's Angolan Portuguese. Like, we're talking about variations and iterations that we can't even grasp yet, like, cause I'm a Portuguese speaker, you know, I haven't used in a while, but like, you're asking me to jump in and speak to somebody who's got a dialectical difference, that's a huge piece to make that jump. So we hope and aspire to will serve those, but what these languages and all these pieces put out are very simplistic. And I want us to appreciate the like nuances within all of that, because not only do they just talk about verbal linguistics, where you can speak and listen to and understand, but they don't account for different things like their reading and writing, their literacy pieces, so this is a little bit of information, just give us a broad brush, but it's not um, all the fine details, and, and quickly, we won't be able to get all the fine details because standardized testing is made for English speakers and not for the speakers of all these other, other wonderful languages, so.
Change that. Well, that's another way that we can talk about, like, we are highlighting Spanish I-ready and dual language learning, right? So we're highlighting that as a way to do that, and we've got, and yeah, we have to push ourselves a little bit more.
And it will be, I think, helpful, cause you just referred to it as, uh, have some countries attached, so, like you said, Portuguese is not, Portugal is same. Um, that's a diary and Pachu or Afghanistan.
And French and Anglo.
It's, it's Anglo-French, right?
Yeah, well, our Portuguese is coming out with.
So acting, I mean, honestly, it's a lot, you know, of countries, but
Yes.
Some, some indications, I think, that gave it at least a little bit more, so we're gonna want to.
Just to try to make sure that, these are, these are students who are in, in a program, not just that speaking languages.
Right, uh, that is how I know our report, but, it's great.
Interesting.
And that's a reminder, you know, just to highlight, now, we are identified, I think we're close to sixty percent as of last year. Which is higher than what we've been in the, I think, in the forty eight point six percent or something, it was in the past, it's been forty seven percent. And what, now, we did decrease our numbers this year because we lost some students. Uh, but also letting, uh, just everyone know, we actually have more students who are bilingual, who've actually exited the programming, so we're a highly bilingual district. But in terms of MLL identified, we there in program and they identify under the WEDA, which is state test, again, state test, to identify them. Uh, one, two, three levels, one, two, three, four, if they, if you, if you exit out of that, then you're not qualified as MLL. But you are qualified, you are still bilingual, of course, you're still noted. So, uh, so we have a large number of that, but I just wanted to share that, uh, we use a WEDA assessment. To determine identi- identify, and even the WEDA assessment, I just want to share, is very below standard, just FYI. It's just measuring language acquisition.
Yeah.
That's what it's meant.
It's, yeah, test, that's the fun part, right, the hard part in August, September, October, a lot of tests, that's what's.
Any initial questions on another, you know, more questions as well? Thank you. Uh, all right, next is the lap high poverty report.
What were you?
What is it?
So thank you.
So the, the, the lap high properties, I noticed that, um, how it's being used at. So your secondary level is mostly being used for, um, certificated salaries and a daily entry, it's being used for parent educator, I'm just. And it's very, I mean, most, there's a theory that's, so this is for students that are, you know, uh, not using the standard. Right, um, the question is, most people say, you want a certified staff, you know, the higher trained people to do the work with them. You know, the students that are hardest to wait, kind of achieving, and so it appears like it's kind of, that's the way the. The secondary school they're doing it, but not the way that the elementary school they're doing it, I'm just kind of curious as to the rationale for that.
Um, I think it's since it all is all based by site leadership team making decisions. I believe that I haven't spoken directly to our secondary and high school folks, but, um, elsewhere to have known that. That might have something to do with how they plan to match the schedule, so the teachers have certain sections. Um, whereas elementary, you're in your whole classroom, so, um, they look more like which of their parent educators could. Um, do more push-in and support in classrooms. So I believe that is part of the, um, uh, thinking of why, the, how they spend the money that way.
No, it's kind of, it's kind of counterintuitive, so I mean, I understand the structure of. So what actually is more the structure, uh, I all agree, it's a little rather than, rather than. And, you know, what's, what teacher can be most effective in a student?
Yeah, and we do have, we have a lot of extremely skillful parent educators. So it really is a matter of how well trained they're supporting, saying, reading is that, they're barely didn't have a training and support in uncertified people. So you're right, um, fresh off, you know, a teacher with college degree and education interests, that is the power. That's the power of us personally like to have with kids, but we have a lot of parents who also do very good work, everybody will change.
And I know, in going to see, one of the questions you asked was the, um, entire lap report, so what you're only seeing is lap high quality.
Yeah, right, yeah, yeah, the teaching, yeah, yeah.
So what you're not seeing is some of that certificate stuff is actually on the lap side.
Okay.
Um, so you know, so yes, it looks fine here because it's just showing the lap high quality, so we'll work on getting.
Yeah.
Kind of the whole.
That makes sense, because, um, I see that, this is all a little piece of, okay, thanks.
Just a good kind of thoughtless question around this information, how is this information gathered or reported and verified?
So it's, it's a part of the budgeting process, so we're pulling the information as far as the staff, um, and everything else. Um, for the reporting, help, helping for our staff, so we'll help us to be including the classifieds side. Um, we use it in conjunction when we're doing the title funding as well. So what we try to do is when you're running allocations for the title funding, because there's very specific steps we have to follow with the federal government. Um, for allocation purposes, then what we do is with the title, the lap funding. Not high quality, because that's specific of the states as far as the allocations, but the lap. Components, the big bucket of lap, is what we try to do is then backfill, um, into some of the areas so that it's. Kind of evening out the total allocations, um, based on, and the number of students on each of the sites. Um, so we use kind of all three buckets, um, when we're looking at these allocations. Um, and then going through that process, um, to staff and then, you know, provide enough, uh, budgets as well.
So, uh, I know you said, um, she's correct that, uh, a lot of this is kind of down at the building level, so are, are you just only kind of working with? Um, the building administrators, uh, as they're planning out these things, like, and what's the collaborative process?
Basically, this last year I wasn't able to do that, just because twenty-three, twenty-four extension, trying to get my head wrapped.
Well, they have a little bit.
You know, like reductions, something like that, but in general, yes, what will happen is that there will be a collaboration. With the principals, how are we spending the money, do we have people appropriately staffed? Um, what should this look like, um, to best support their movements? Um, and so there's time for also for us to make these changes, um, since we're just starting this year as well, so. There's a JSM's meeting, and it was a lot of boys.
Well, and talk about the discussion earlier about, uh, reading, um, math programs, and you knew by the elementary school, it was requiring the lowest, you can see that it's the finest funding. But not by a great percentage, of the one that's doing much better than the other two. How do you figure out those allocations if there's actual, without harming to Tuckell? How do you, how do you pump it up? Uh, the support, I mean, does Tuckell need as much as it has to do as well as, as it's doing? Or I'm just trying to look at this and kind of go, you know, uh, cats can't use, and I remember that I'm mad, it could be because it's an influx of. You know, refugees immigrants, um.
Right.
But at this, at this, that's where, now we're suffering the most.
Right, and this allocation, that lap high poverty is specific allocation per school given to us by OSPI.
Okay.
So these were the specific allocations and the dollar amounts given to us by OSPI per, um, location.
To announce that we could just, yeah, if we know this.
So that's why we look at title and any other component of lap, um, to try and do some balancing with those.
Are these, is the state just not aware that the money, you know, that are?
No, so the way, the way the funding, we can go down this rabbit hole a little bit, the way the funding works is it's a two-year look back.
Okay.
So it doesn't take into consideration the current year's means or even last year's means, it looks back two years. And so.
Okay.
So in two years, and so in two years, the money.
We'll get a lot of.
I'm gonna let you, that's the money, FYI.
Yeah, yeah.
And I, and I want to re-stress what you think, this is the high poverty report, a high poverty lab report. This is not the entire lab report, so I just, I just want to acknowledge that there was a concern by one horse schools about the report. This is just the high poverty lab report, it's not the entire lab report, and it's not the title report as well. So I want to state that for the record for this team, because we did get an email concerned about the report, that it not being accurate. And that this is, I just want to explain that this report specifically is one part of a larger lab report, so.
And the other thing to understand is that all this stuff is based on, um, students that qualify, which is under the Family Income Survey. Which is a survey given to, um, all our, uh, students, and the, the return rate may vary.
Yes.
Depending on the school. And so that has nothing, the return rate has nothing to do with the need of the school, like, that's to do with, with. How the, you know, how the family in that school and the, all the, the incentives that have, have been given to them, and so. It's all tied up in that.
And I want to thank our principals, I'm gonna say that last year our principals worked so hard to get that, those surveys, and they worked, they emphasized it, they made competitions, like. They worked hard, all the principals did, so I just want to thank them, and the school staff too, they really, and office managers and everybody. I want to thank them, and I will note also, it is harder for high school.
Yeah.
You know, the high school students aren't as motivated to turn these forms in, so that, that lower rate at the high school level, and it could be pride too, it could be lots of reasons, but. Uh, I know, because I was a high poverty kid, and I hated the blue little, the orange ticket that I had that was different than the yellow ticket, so I was ashamed of it. So I know, because I was that kid, um, but it is harder for us to get the high school.
Yes.
Um, report, the, those surveys, that it's just, it, they do it, they announce it, they do all the things that the, the high school kids, it's not. So that actually brings down our overall rate as a system, just like, and it's something we're working on, or trying to think about, but. It's just what it is, so, yeah.
And it's about way above small schools, so.
Yes, it's just, it's not, it's not just our high school, it's a lot of high schools, but we have a higher number of, of course, our rates, you know.
It's, yeah, hard to fill out.
It's not, it's not that, it's just, I think, it's either, there's just lots of reasons, you know, in the past, what happened once in the past, and I'm glad we don't do this anymore. Um, high school students were told, you get three free meals, and if you don't get the form, you don't get it anymore, and we don't have to. It's right, incentive, right? Which I'm glad we don't do that anymore as a system, but they used to do that five to ten years ago, so that has stopped, and since we're all paid district, because we're a bar, a high. Think, so there's not that, there's not any really incentive, you know, to develop that really from the high school perspective, if they don't have to, so. But I just want to thank our principals, who really worked hard, so they got our members in pretty nicely, I mean, it wasn't a problem I would have been, but. It, they worked super hard on it, and they'll probably continue to work on it this year too, so. I mean, I just want to shout them out big time, they all, they all were amazing.
Yes.
So we, we spent a hundred and eleven thousand dollars on early, is that right?
Yes.
So that is maybe there, and then, oh, did they present to us last year? I think we talked about that, and I don't believe that that happened.
Uh, they did not present to us last year, but we can, we, we're having Foster High School present to us, I think, coming up in the fall, so we can ask them to be part of that.
I think that would be good, and I'd like to see our hundred and eleven thousand dollar people.
Yeah, I also think that would be good, because there, we talked a lot about the College and Career Center, it has kind of got, some people got laid off there, and. There, there really is kind of, at my understanding, is one of the core aspects of how they're going to build that back down for our students, and that was a. Their recruiting process is really critical for our students, who are filling out apps and lots of things, so. I think, I agree, we absolutely want to hear how that's coming together.
And I will say that they, uh, are actually, they've added staffing this year to support them, and. They actually are supporting college and career, the College and Career Center at Foster High School, so. I think it'll be exciting to hear the work they did last year, and then how they're changing and adapting to our current situation, so, yeah.
Yeah, that would be good, because when I hear adding staffing, does that mean adding costs to?
No, they didn't add costs, no. They, uh, oh, yeah, I, I, I'll just share, I heard, uh, I, I just want to share, we are so committed to telling people, every salesperson that comes. And I heard Deb Corr say this today, um, just to let you know, we're in mining condition, but if they're calling us to sell us something. We are all saying that to everybody. Can I call back, can I call back? The two years. Well, that's why I said, are you welcome, buddy, that, you can, you can check it back in two years, thank you very much.
Anything else on this one? All right, thank you so much. Um, next is the field trips, excursions, and outdoor education, third policy, two, three, two, zero, um, my assumption, oh, yeah, right, so. Any additional questions?
No, my only comment is doing out of education in change, or it's kind of, I do, we've not done that, we always did. It's been in the past, and I'm sure this is because we got last in line, and that's the last one, but anyway, hopefully we can get it back to a time of year where it's.
I agree.
Very motivating.
But I will say that the, the camp cabins are pretty nice, they both, they have weddings every day.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, it's a nice.
It's a swanky, rustic setting.
Yeah.
But it's true, I think when we got into making this change into this current year, uh, because I was more popular. Other schools, districts that have been contracted with it for years, got in early.
Sure.
So we're trying to work our way up the, in order to get in earlier.
That's the only, the only reason we had screening in the past, because we've been in that program for a long time.
Right, exactly.
Uh, this is the whole gear library thing, do students have to, or does the district not pay for that, or is it free?
I'm agreeing.
I'm just wondering if, uh, that would be the good time for us to engage and communicate with different graders by coming along with the bigger jobs.
Falcon, they, did you allow for the administrator and an extra adult to go visit them? Um, and equally, like, you mentioned January, I mean, that's not ideal time, I'm not outdoorsy, so. So I was helping to coordinate this, I was like, we were going in January, not, or January, January, we're going there? I was scheduled a little well, but then I spoke to the people, and I was very sure they have this gear library. And as Dr. Pritos mentioned, maybe there's a location, the whole sweating.
I have a late.
Okay, it's a good question. And, and this must be, okay, uh, so, I have more. And they, they invited me out there to make sure that I felt comfortable with it, and it's like. I don't know, maybe, like, the rest, maybe, maybe I'll go check it out.
I'm a camp girl, I go every year, I was the, I was, I went as a fifth grade teacher, I went as a principal, I'm happy to go, I love camp. I think camp is the best, I go to my kids a lot every year.
Take a different day, because I have control points at same time.
And I'm in December, January, too, you guys.
You know, I'm trying to run your heels, but. No, not the woods, not the woods.
They're gonna get rain in April too, at one time.
So.
Yeah, really is, yeah.
So you're higher.
All of one aside, and we're gonna try to apply sooner, and then we'll be retired. Um, there's a point system.
Okay.
So it's not applying sooner, it's a seniority type of point system, so if you have been in. Because of whatever reason, for what you're not, or whatever it is, the longer you've been, the sooner you get to go. So like, if you've been to like, say, Campbell's or Soren's land, if you go, certainly, you get to rebook for a week. But if you try to get in there all of a sudden, brand new, you're not going to know where to get in, unless you, you can shimmy in on a specific date. So if you've been going there forever, you get your choice, and then the next day, so, 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 we're brand new to Islandwood. So we got cheating where we can.
Yeah, and I will say.
Yes.
The one problem, either with compared to, uh, the previous ones, is that we can't get all of our visitors there at the same time, so we're going multiple shifts. There's a big advantage, if we could get, get someone, if everyone get the entire, all of the degrees there at the same time, so they could get friends and get new friends before you. Yeah, same, same desires, yeah.
Yeah, we're the intersect of the other camps too.
There's a balance that too, whether, you know, the intentionality, you know, what you just described with the graders mixing before fifth grade, but then. You know, before sixth grade starts, this number happens, you can't forget, you met over three days. But then, there are some places that do fifth grade camp, the beginning of sixth grade, to do that same concept of intermixing, so. If that's like, the goal is to intermix that, then you need to think about when you do it.
Sure.
If the goal is to.
Yeah.
Be outdoors, then we do it where we do it, and so, we just need to make sure our.
It will be fast.
Yeah, yeah, it will, will help to make those things happen, once we.
Thank you for the work, and I know, well, for making this happen, and that was a big.
Yeah, sure.
It was a loss, uh, a few years ago, so it seemed that there's, so.
And it's totally dependent, we have the outdoor education grant out of state, so.
Yeah.
We're excited, and I hope the teachers and everything, second, everything.
First, boss.
You know.
All right, well, next is the unemployment compensation program, our policy is six, five, three, zero. Any additional questions here?
Page four. If we go down to, you said that we are already higher, don't that, was that right, twenty-seven percent, point seven one. Budget bounce, can you just help me kind of understand, if we're running higher, how is this funding going, because. I'm sitting here, I was looking at this earlier, and I was thinking, I'm trying to find some money for some. You know, another interpreter, so if we're running higher at twenty-seven point seven than the state average, is that something we can access? I'm just kind of curious about how that works.
Yeah, Aaron Gergon, I'm Charlie with Relations and Technology, keep them going out. Uh, good evening, so the, the way that the unemployment bullet source is through, uh, employee benefits. It's on, uh, it's actually the employer, that is, it's about, right now it's two point five percent of gross wages.
That go into the unemployment pool, there are eleven school districts, including Tacula. That are part of the Pu Do Sound Educational Services District Unemployment Pool that we contribute to. And so, you know, just over the course of, you know, well, since nineteen eighty-four, we've been part of the consortium of the pool. And we've accumulated this balance, there have been some years in our history where the balance, the. The unemployment pool balances gets below the average, but right now we're running a little bit higher than the average, which isn't a bad place to be. It just means that we are in a place to make some adjustments. We, uh, in this coming fiscal year, we're able to lower the employer contribution. Um, by um some percentages, a fraction of a percent, because it's already a low percentage, and it's only two point five percent. But uh, the reason we built, there's many reasons why we built up. A, a balance that's above the area average, and one is that we had. We used a lot of our S R funds to pay for positions, and so on those positions. Excuse me, we were paying two point five percent of those gross wages into this pool, and so we built a, a pool, and so. We have little people off, and uh, we have uh employees, former employees that are accessing the unemployment pool. So we do project that the pool will decline. Uh, because of being accessed now for unemployment claims, plus we could lower. The uh contribution.
So the twenty-seven point seven percent is not reflective of the balance of the five eighty-seven, one ninety-eight? That, that would be a quarter of that, right, so we're talking one hundred and twenty-five thousand, as X plus or minus, you know, so I'm just kind of wondering how that. What number are we going off of?
So the current unemployment balance is the five hundred eighty-seven thousand, one hundred ninety-eight dollars. The area average, so I took the eleven divided by the number, and we, the area average is four hundred fifty-nine thousand, seven hundred. Forty dollars, some are higher, some lower. Uh, some are in districts with, you know, fifty thousand students, some are, you know, in thousands of employees. Uh, and so, uh, Tacula is, uh. In. It's more above average, but we're not the highest. We don't have the highest balance.
And that's going to come down a little?
We protect, we protect.
They're going to be twelve off.
Yeah.
And we're contributing less, are we targeting a certain level then, or are we trying to get down to four hundred and eleven?
And I think a comfortable balance would be within the, between four and five hundred, I think we would be good with. And so, you know, we did a balance update every quarter, uh, quarter one starts in January, so we're wrapping up quarter three and moving into quarter four. And so we'll get a quarter three updated in September, early, uh, early October, and we can see how we are doing.
So this determining this unbalanced account, is that a, a formula way of thing? Or is it, is it done by professionals in this field, or is it up us, how much, can we let that thing go down?
We, we can consult with. Uh, with the P S D S B.
Yeah.
Uh, employment security as well, but ultimately, it is our, the CFO will work on this with, um, the S B.
Okay, yeah, because they do, they do, they go to the bar, it's kind of scary.
Yeah, so at five hundred thousand, if we're going down, that's, that's an eighty-seven thousand, that, that to me is a position, right? Uh, somebody we could, well, I don't know how, how that works, it could be somebody.
Yeah, the question is, do you want to do it in one year, or do you want to do it more, it sounds like some of those things that kind of. Goes up and down and then, so you probably dirt it out in a year.
Well, I think I'd be interested to even like, get past our mining conditions, if you know, there were even more potential. You know, staffing adjustments next year, and so, while they're going to likely be more, yeah. Um, so you know, maybe, yeah, anything about, um, doing twenty twenty-six, is when we can, you know, decide if we want to, we can adjust.
And it sounds like you're, I mean, you are, there's going to be less, could be less, uh, considering that, that less amount is already calculated in our budget for next year. Is there, yes, that assumption, okay, okay. That's correct.
All right, uh, great, next, uh, to our access, thank you. Um, starting with the approval of human resources staffing report.
So.
Uh, any questions, comments? All right, all in favor of approval?
Aye.
All right. Uh, next is approval of policy at twelve fifty, which is the student representative of the board of directors. Essentially the change in, change of two, student representative is to three, um, as we discussed, adding a sophomore. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, and then lastly, the approval of T S C's transition by the instructional program for half lunch. Okay, any questions or comments?
That was a not competent second.
We definitely say what the most.
Charlie, you've got a whispered second.
I guess, uh, there's one, I just want to make, it's the answer to the question, is the budget amount. Is it covered by anticipated revenue, and the answer was not regularly, are we, are we, uh. You know. Are we confident we're going to be able to cover this? Uh, I kind of know, so this package is being submitted to O P I with number, so it's an updated number.
Yes.
So you'll, it does say.
Exactly.
Okay.
And if we submit it, it's incorrect, or they don't like it, they give it back to us, and they tell us to revise it, and we revise it. And what's unique about our C B I P students or that package is that we do tend to have other funding. Such as dual inherited language grants, which are not due until a month later, which we will then blend in.
Right.
To kind of round out positions, because you can't make full positions and jobs out of these chunks of money.
Right.
And if this seems, you know, generous, the other ones, they're much more small. So, uh, don't get too excited about any future money, hopefully, but we'll, you know, chug it together in a way that makes it most meaningful to our students.
Okay, thanks.
Brilliant. All right, all in favor of approval?
Aye.
Ready, ready for the firewalls? Do the.
Yes.
Okay, uh, thank you. Okay, um, all right, that brings us to our last opportunity for public comment, um, if you're enjoying this virtually, look at the public comment, you can do so, right? Using that raise hand function in Zoom, um, or typing your name into the chat. I'll give you just a minute to find, um, if you would like to do so. Appreciate you hanging with us.
Thank you.
All right, we'll see none, um, we'll, uh, if I can get a motion to adjourn our meeting.
That's the one.
Is that the one? No? Okay, we have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we appreciate it, Karen.